Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to Monday. It's unbelievable, but it's July, July 2025, Meeting of the Common Council of the City of St. John. We're going to start this evening with a land acknowledgement, and Counselor Harris is going to read that for us tonight, so Counselor Harris, over to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequist is situated is the traditional territory of the Woolishteweeque. The Woolishteweeque, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Micma, the Pascatomacadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
Okay, can I ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem? Okay, City Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you, your worship. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of June the 3rd.
Approval of minutes June 3rd. Deputy and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Before I go to next item, I just want to mention I've got Counselor Norton online this evening, and Counselor Lowe is also online this evening, so thank you both for joining us. Okay, City Clerk, over to you for the next item.
Next is item 2.2, Approval of June 16th Minutes.
June 16th Minutes. Deputy Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
And next, we have approval of the agenda, and there are a few additions from Committee of the Whole. The first one would be 17.1, Agreement for Ashburn Lake Road, 17.2, Acquisition of Crown Land off Ashburn, and 17.3, Amended and Restated Agreement of Purchase and Sale Exhibition Association of the City of St. John.
I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Counselor Killen and Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
And also, your worship, I'd just like to point out to council that around the horseshoe, we had left some late correspondence that came in with respect to tonight's public hearings, so you'll see a paper package of that.
Thank you.
Next is disclosures of conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest? Not seeing any. Next item.
Next is the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you for consent, please.
I'd move 5.1 through to 5.6. Any questions?
Counselor Sullivan is seconding that, and questions? You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor McKinn— or deputy, over to you for the question. On 5, what?
5.2.
5.2, yeah, okay.
I'm just wondering if we have a start time and possible target dates for completion, and what traffic impacts we could expect.
Mr. Baker, the floor is yours.
Through your worship to the deputy, start time is probably the end of July, early August. It has to be completed by October 15th, substantially completed.
October 15th.
Substantial completion?
Substantial completion.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Redwine, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going ahead and agreeing with everything, but I just wanted to make a comment. So 5.2 for the roundabout. I know that staff are not agreeing with me, but I just wanted to make a point to say that I think that we should be looking in the future of adding APS lights for when people are coming in through Foster Thurston after seeing the simulator at the open house. It's crazy. When it's busy, there's no way somebody with seeing-eye dog could cross there safely. So I'd like us to keep that in mind going forward, and I also just want to say a big thank you to the Arts Board. They do such great work, and if anybody wants to take a look at 5.6, they've got some grants that are being awarded, some great projects.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan, you're up next.
Thanks, your worship. Just a general comment on 5.2 and 5.3. You know, for all the conversations we end up in around this table and lanes, speaking of lanes, this one's definitely in our lane, roundabouts, and I've only been in Move S.J. for many, many years, so I'm just excited to see it being operationalized, and I know any conversations I've had with my neighbors out in Milledgeville, even folks who don't usually talk about municipal politics, people are quite excited about being able to safely navigate Sandy Point Road, so very excited, looking forward to it.
Me too. I say finally. So I've got the motion on the floor and a secondar, so I'll take the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is members' comments.
Members' comments. Counselor Stewart, over to you first.
Just two quick comments, your worship. First one, Pro Kids has opened up the fall application process now. It's available online, and they close April 15th. That's the first thing. Second thing, being a port city, we're used to— and lots of marinas around—we're used to seeing a lot of boats being moved around this city. But if you were able to take note on Saturday, there was a special boat that was moved, and I'd like to congratulate Counselor Ogden on getting the Marco Polo to its new destination. There's—he's still got, you know, a heavy road to hoe or a long river to sail, navigate. However, getting that boat there, Barry, I gotta tell you, I'm very impressed. Well done, mister.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Redwine, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I second that one. And I have a big thank you, actually. So I had told the story about what was over at the Lattimore Lake Community Center to a friend of mine, somebody who I think's become a friend, and next thing you know, there's picnic tables there, and there's benches out there donated from Derek May and Dave DeGraff. So thank you very much. I didn't mean for you to jump out there and start building, but thank you for doing it. It'll be put to give use, I'm sure. I just wanted to mention, I was looking at all of the websites, and I thought, do people really look at all of what I do when I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to do in my very little free time? There's so many events to do in St. John, so things like live music down on the boardwalk, Area 506, Clean Square Farmers Market, the St. John Night Market, the Moonlight Bazaar, there's all kinds of things coming up, so where to look? The Discover St. John page, Uptown St. John's website, our event page. If you don't know what to do, there's tons to do, so those are the places to look. And you know what? The last time I took a little vacation not far from here, I regretted going away. You don't need to go away. You can save money in your travel time and support local businesses right here. We have all kinds of things to see, all kinds of things to do, great little shops. Take a walk through Uptown St. John and enjoy a small city with a big hearse.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
I love that list, Counselor Redwine. Yeah, lots to do in St. John. We had a couple of tough meetings recently, conversations around Interaction School of Performing Arts, and I guess when one door closes, another opens, or in this case, when one church closes, another opens, because if you get a pickup truck and your friends are moving, they give you a call, and I was so happy to help them move up the street because Interaction School of Performing Arts is now based out of St. Andrew-St. David Church. So if you're looking to have something for your kiddos to do this summer, check out their website. They're still uptown. They are going full speed at St. Andrew-St. David Church, and not mine to announce, so I won't, but conversations having with them, but what's going on in that church or former church, I guess, is quite exciting. So we've still got lots of culture for the young kids, lots of— so later in the summer, look for them in their coffee houses and their performances to support our uptown theaters.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. Good comments. That church has apparently amazing acoustics in it, and I love the setup of the pews in it, so it's a fantastic and a good, really great space for that crew. Nice to have them there. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Next, we have a proclamation, item 7.1 on your agenda, and it's for National Drowning Prevention Week.
Whereas the Life Saving Society is a national charitable organization working to prevent drowning and reduce water-related injury through our training programs, water-smart public education, drowning research, and aquatic safety standards. The Life Saving Society certifies Canada's National Lifeguards, and whereas National Drowning Prevention Week is one of the society's leading public education initiatives with events taking place across the country to focus media and community attention on drowning and drowning prevention. And whereas the Life Saving Society urges Canadians and residents of St. John to supervise children who are in and around the water to please refrain from drinking alcoholic beverages while participating in aquatic activities, and to always wear a life jacket when boating. And whereas the UN— General Assembly passed the UN Resolution on Drowning Prevention, and it is—it's Resolution A/75/L76, and they have named July 25th of each year as World Drowning Prevention Day. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreaden of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of July 20th to 26th, 2025, as National Drowning Prevention Week in the city of St. John. Next item, City Clerk.
Well, we'll have to skip public hearings until 6:30, this advertised start time, so next after that would be 10.1. It's a consideration of a bylaw for third reading, and this is for the traffic bylaw amendment regarding all terrain vehicles on specific St. John streets.
Commissioner Huguenholtz, this one is going over to you.
Yes, good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you this evening is third reading of a change to our traffic bylaw that would permit ATV use on select city roads out in the Laurinville area, specifically King William Road, Galbraith Place, and Patty's Hill Drive, and this was in response to a request from the Laurinville Trail Riders Group. This would have been considered by council at the last meeting, and this is before you this evening for third reading. Subject to your questions, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, I don't see any questions, Commissioner, so I'll hand it over to the clerk for the items we need.
In this case, we require two resolutions of council to— first, to approve first third reading by entirety, and then third reading by title.
Okay, I've got third reading by entirety by Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A bylaw of the city of St. John entitled a bylaw respecting the traffic on streets in the city of St. John, bylaw number MV 10.1, and amendments thereto enacted on the 7th day of October 2019, is hereby amended as follows. One, adding to subsection 2.2 in alphabetical order the following: Off-road vehicle means all vehicles including included in the definition of off-road vehicle as defined in the Off-Road Vehicle Act, SNB 1985-C01.5, and amendments thereto. Number two, adding the following as section 16.1: Off-road vehicle use; no person shall drive an off-road vehicle on any street in the city other than those listed in Schedule S. Three, the following Schedule S off-road vehicle use is added immediately after Schedule R. Schedule S off-road vehicle use; Street King William Road limits from Ocean Westway to Galbraith Place; save and accept the Route 1 overpass. Street Galbraith Place limits full length, and Street Patty Hill Drive from limits are from 230 meters west of King William Road to Westerly End of Street.
Okay, I'll take a motion for third reading by title. Counselor Harris and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting the traffic on streets in the city of St. John, bylaw number MV 10.1, and amendments thereto.
Okay, City Clerk, next item.
And, your worship, I believe there is a request to hold 10.2 until the 6:30 start time?
Okay.
Okay, so next would be item 12.1, Chief Administrative Officer Update on Select Catalytic Projects and Advocacy.
CAO, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening. This evening, I'll provide an update on three of the catalytic projects, starting first with the public schools, and good progress being made there. The province Anglophone South School District and city continue planning work for the south end and north end schools. Building permits have been issued for both schools, and construction activity is underway in the north end. South end, the Rainbow Park, you'll notice, was fencing erected recently by the province's contractor, and we're looking forward to construction starting there. And we continue our city capital project work in and around the area of the south end school. Happy to report that Charlotte Street is now substantially complete, and that for St. James Street, contractors planning to mobilize there to start work between Sydney and Charlotte Street later this month, and finally Broad Street Underground Infrastructure is ongoing. And on the affordable housing, as it relates to grants, so there's now seven projects, 128 affordable units currently under construction, receiving municipal support, so we've seen an increase there, and in addition, we have the two separate housing New Brunswick projects, that total 20 new public housing units also under construction. And the new intake for the affordable housing grant will be launched in the fall of this year, and the soft cost program remains open, and we continue to receive applications for that. Regarding the Rapid Housing Initiative known as the Bear Green Residence that we've been supporting, work has been progressing swiftly down on Broadview Avenue, and the superstructure is now nearly complete. And on the Housing Accelerator Program updates, the dashboard metrics have now been updated to June 30th on our website, and the half-program updates in terms of the RFP for e-permitting that's been issued and closes on July 23rd. And the north end secondary plan, Phase 1, Community Engagement and Visioning is completed, and drafting of the plan in Phase 2 of the Community Engagement and Visioning has begun. And lastly, as it relates to Fundy Key, the new deck located—we're really in the final stages now, and the new deck located between the Isle House and market squares in the final stages of being completed for occupancy and will be opened once work has been completed. And other than that, there's stage work that's continuing through the summer months to continue to improve and enhance the experience at Idolim Akahamic. And with that, your worship, that concludes— yep.
All right. I don't see any questions, so I'll take a motion to receive for information. Counselor Darling and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 12.2, Staff Report with Respect to Contract Number 2025-20, McAllister Drive.
Commissioner Fogan, over to you, please, for the intro.
Thank you, worship, through you to council. In your kit with the procurement report is a presentation that's been included due to the significant impact this project will have on the community. The section of road needs asphalt resurfacing, but staff have concerns with the water main under this section of the street. We know that there is a lot of work ongoing, a lot of interruption in city roads and major arterial roads, but there's substantial risk to resurfacing this section without replacing the water main first. So there is a planned water outage associated with this work in the area mapped in the presentation, but an unplanned outage would be substantially worse, and staff do not want to delay this replacement to another contract year. Currently, staff are working with comms to develop a meaningful and effective comms plan, and council and the community will, of course, hear more about this project as the construction approaches. And with that, if there are any questions that I can answer, or other— Mike Gray, our Water Operations Manager, is also present to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. This one here is in this part of the kit and not in the consent agenda, because this is going to require a big comms rollout, as well, as you said, because of the importance of this, et cetera. So Counselor Redwine has a question for you on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know staff are going to come back anyway with the comms plan, but I just wanted to make mention that I'd like to see us rolling out the information as soon as we can, just because— well, and I'll be encouraging people to sign up for our emails as well, so I just feel like sometimes these things come up really close, and then it's hard to get the information out there, so the sooner the better, and then getting close to.
Yeah, well, if we award the contract tonight, that's the first step, so we'll get it right out there. Okay, so I need a motion for this. Wait, yeah, City Clerk? No, we've got the motions there. Recommendations in the kit. Oh, Counselor Harris, sorry, do you have—
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Okay.
Noticing something. All right, just a quick question, Mayor. Are we seeing a pretty major savings on the project based on the budget and the tender that we brought in for this, or am I seeing— am I missing something?
Through your worship with council, no, there are substantial savings from our budget estimate on this project, but like all projects, we have some that come over, some that come under.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, I mean, it's a good sign that all the leading tenders from local contractors came in well under where we're at, so anyway, it just—you rarely ever see that, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't seeing things. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, the recommendations in the kit. Do I have them over in a second, or no? The deputy and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next would be under the general correspondence, item 15.1. We have World Mitochondrial Disease Week proclamation and illumination request, and there's a staff recommendation to refer this to the clerk to prepare the proclamation and to the Communications Department for the illumination request.
Deputy's going to move it. Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 15.2. It's a submission by National Dental Care Day Foundation. It's a proclamation request, and the staff recommendation is to refer this to the clerk to prepare the proclamation.
Counselor Harris and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is 15.3, a submission by St. John Theater Company, Sanctuary Theater Rezoning, and recommendation is to receive for information.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Oh, sorry, there's a question on there? Counselor Redwine, sorry, over to you for the questions.
Just a quick one, Mayor, through you to Commissioner Poppenroth, I think. It's my understanding that this property that we started to go through zoning is still going to be zoned so that if people want to do theater in there in the future, they can. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I just want to make sure that's clear for the public for where Interaction School of Arts was.
Commissioner, over to you.
Thank you. Through your worship to the council, yes, that's true. There's flexibility in the zone to allow for that type of use in the future.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to receive for information. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 15.4, Submission Regarding Sculpture, St. John Missing Sculpture and Maintaining Maintenance Inquiry, and there's a recommendation to refer this to the CAO for follow-up.
Okay, I'll just follow up a bit myself here. I got a bit of information. The shrubs were cut back, the structure, the sculpture, is stored at Forest Hills until that park is ready down there, back to Rainbow Park, and they need a new piece of granite to fix the actual sign, so they are aware of that. So I guess we can still just refer it over to the CAO, but they're certainly aware. I've already done quite a bit of the work, so I'll take them over in a second. Counselor Darling and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have a few items that came from Committee of the Whole and would require a resolution in open session to adopt this. So the first is 17.1. It's an agreement for Ashburn Lake Road rail crossing upgrade, and the resolution would read that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement generally in the form attached to M and C 2025-176 and any ancillary documentation required.
Counselor Sullivan's going to move that, and Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 17.2, Committee of the Whole Recommendation with Respect to Potential Acquisition of Crown Land off Ashburn Road, and the resolution would read that the city accept the terms and conditions outlined in the letter of intent from the province of New Brunswick dated June 16th, 2025, as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on June 7th, 2025, for the potential acquisition of crown land identified as PID 55003982, located off Ashburn Road, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said letter of intent.
Deputy's going to move that. Counselor Redwine on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the final recommendation from Committee of the Whole, item 17.3. It's amended and restated agreement of purchase and sale exhibition association of the city and county of St. John, and the resolution would read that the city enter into the attached, amended, and restated agreement of purchase and sale with the exhibition association of the city and county of St. John in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on July 7th, 2025, for the purpose of making minor amendments to the original agreement of purchase and sale, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said agreement—to execute the said amended and restated agreement of purchase and sale— purchase and sale, and any other documents necessary to facilitate the transaction.
Okay, take them over in a second on that. The deputy and Counselor Killen, on the question, all in favor?
I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, you're like Counselor Harris.
No, I think this is an important one, because obviously, a lot of people who follow council remember, we've been trying to get rid of a lot of surplus land, so why are we buying this one? And this is a really important part. I want to thank the city for noticing this coming up, and DTI's offloading of land, which happens sporadically all over the place. So caught this one, and we're going to be able to protect part of that TransCanada Trail and connect it, so that's, that's really great, so thank you, staff on that.
All right, so we've got the motion on the floor. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we just have one item left before we, we have to wait for 6:30 for the start of the, let's take 10 minutes, we'll have a quick, we'll do it, back at 6:25, that's perfect. Let's come back at 6:00. I need a motion to recess, Counselor Sullivan?
Resess for 10 minutes.
For 10 minutes, and Counselor and the deputy. All in favor? Excellent, okay. All right, so what I need from you? Yep.
Yep. Yes, we just read.
Okay, team. It's eighteen twenty-five. Do I have everybody? Yeah, one, two, three, four. Who's missing over there? No, four, five, yeah, I've got them all. Yeah, okay. All right. City Clerk, do I need a motion to go back into? I just called the meeting back to order, okay. Next item.
Thank you, your worship. So, we had skipped item ten point two, and that's the municipal plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, section fifty-nine conditions, amendment to land for public purpose policy, St. John Industrial Park expansion, third reading.
Okay, Commissioner Poforov, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is an application for municipal plan amendment, rezoning and zoning bylaw text amendment that was submitted by Dillon Consulting LTD for land located on King William Road. The municipal plan amendment rezoning and zoning bylaw text amendment would facilitate the development of the expansion of the Spruce Lake Industrial Park. The proposed text amendments will establish the Spruce Lake Industrial Zone and associated development criteria. The application received first and second reading on June sixteenth, following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'm going to pass it over to you, City Clerk, for the motions that are required for third reading.
Your worship, this is a lengthy one. It requires eight separate motions for approval. So, it would start with approval of the municipal plan, which requires approval of third reading by summary, third reading by title, approving the zoning bylaw amendment, third reading by summary, third reading by title, then the separate zoning bylaw amendment required, requires approval of third reading by entirety, third reading by title, approval of section fifty-nine conditions, and approval of land for public purpose policy.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve third reading by summary. Counselor Harris, Counselor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And the summary is, the application incorporates a series of amendments to the municipal plan, which will establish new policy for the expanded Spruce Lake Industrial Park. We'll expand the primary development area to incorporate the entire subject site, and we'll redesignate the land to heavy industrial and park and natural area to facilitate future development. The amendment will establish approximately five hundred and ten hectares of land for future industrial development. In addition, the plan amendment will establish a one hundred and fifty-meter-wide buffer along the eastern and southern boundaries of the expansion area to provide separation between the proposed industrial area and adjacent residential areas. This area, along with the provincially significant wetlands and watercourses, will be designated as park and natural area. A rezoning will also be undertaken, which will rezone the subject site to park and Spruce Lake Industrial Zone. The SPI Zone will establish development standards for the development area, which will include increased setbacks for more intense industrial uses and those uses which involve hazardous products or materials. Spruce Lake Industrial Park expansion will offer pad-ready industrial sites to attract and support new industrial developments.
Okay, I need a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Norton, Counselor Darling, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve third reading by summary. The deputy. Counselor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And we have the same summary for the zoning, and unless there's opposition, I'll read it again in summary.
Yes, please do.
Okay, the application incorporates a series of amendments to the municipal plan, which will establish new policy for the expanded Spruce Lake Industrial Park. We'll expand the primary development area to incorporate the entire subject site, and we'll redesignate the land to heavy industrial and park and natural area to facilitate future development. The amendment will establish approximately five hundred and ten hectares of land for future industrial development. In addition, the plan amendment will establish a one hundred and fifty-meter-wide buffer along the eastern and southern boundaries of the expansion area to provide separation between the proposed industrial area and adjacent residential areas. This area, along with the provincially significant wetlands and watercourses, will be designated as park and natural area. A rezoning will also be undertaken, which will rezone the subject site to park and the Spruce Lake Industrial Zone, SPI. The SPI Zone will establish development standards for the development area, which will include increased setbacks for more intense industrial uses and those uses which involve hazardous products or materials. Spruce Lake Industrial Park expansion will offer pad-ready industrial sites to attract and support new industrial developments.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Stewart, Counselor Norton, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay. Now I need a motion to approve third reading by entirety. Counselor Redwan and Counselor Darling, on the question. Oh, it's all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Over to you, City Clerk.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting... Oh, my apologies. A bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John, enacted on the fifteenth day of December twenty-fourteen, is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning land having an area of approximately five hundred and eighty-five point six-seven hectares located at zero King William Road and one zero six-five King William Road, also identified as PID and a portion of five-five-two-four-three-five-nine-six from medium industrial, rural, and green energy to Spruce Lake Industrial and Park pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act.
Okay, I now need a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Norton and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve section fifty-nine conditions. Counselor Harris, Counselor Redwan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And now I need a motion that the land for public purpose policy be amended? Yes?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so that the land for public purpose policy be amended to direct funds collected through subdivisions for land zones Spruce Lake Industrial to community projects within the Laurinville community.
Deputy and Counselor Darling, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, City Clerk, next item. That completes third reading for Laurinville.
That's correct.
All right, next item, City Clerk.
Next, under public hearings, we have item nine point one, proposed zoning bylaw amendment for two-two-four Anthony Cove Road.
Commissioner Poforov, over to you for the introduction.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. This evening's first public hearing is for a rezoning that was submitted by Tricia and Jeff Perry for a property located at two-twenty-four Anthony's Cove Road. The rezoning would permit the conversion of a residential property into a personal wellness business. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Eva Mattson, the planner on the file, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Eva, over to you, please.
Thank you. So, as said before you, is a proposal to rezone a site from rural residential to rural general commercial to allow for a personal wellness business. This would include onsite parking and a new spa area. The subject property is located on a one-hector lot on the far southeast area of the St. John on Anthony's Cove Road, which is kind of a dead-end street off of Redhead. The immediate and broader residential neighborhood is of low-density zoning, which supports one- and two-unit homes surrounded by larger rural lots. There is also industrial uses in the broader neighborhood. The site itself has a current small residential building on it and a parking area. In the site photos above, you can see the access to the subject site from Anthony's Cove Road. The operation would largely be not visible from the public street. The second, smaller images just show the rest of Anthony's Cove going south, where it ends less than a kilometer away, and then where it goes north, and it meets up with Redhead Road. The subject site is designated rural residential under the municipal plan, and this designation applies to lands that support low-density residential outside of rural settlement areas and beyond the primary development area. The primary focus of policy within the rural residential designation is to limit the expansion of such areas. So, the most relevant municipal plan policy for this proposal is LU forty-six, which directs that where new development and significant redevelopment in the rural settlement and rural residential areas is permitted, it should be compatible with the existing character and respect and enhance the surrounding natural environment. The proposed use of the site for a personal wellness business aligns with this policy as it involves minimal changes to the property, and the approach is intended to preserve the natural environment and ensure that compatibility with the rural character. The zone is currently rural residential, which accommodates unserviced residential development in the form of one- or two-unit dwellings. It does permit some existing uses, such as agricultural and mobile homes. The rural general commercial, which is proposed, is intended to accommodate small-to-midsized commercial needs that serve surrounding rural areas, and it's intended for, again, land outside the primary development area that is either designated rural settlement or rural residential, which is the case here. And the proposed personal wellness business isn't allowed use under this zone and would meet all of the zone's standards. Letters were mailed out to property owners within one hundred meters of the subject site on June third. No letters were received as of this presentation. Public notice for this meeting was posted on June thirteenth, and PAC was held on June seventeenth. As this proposal does align with all relevant policy, PAC and staff do recommend common council rezone the site from rural residential to rural general commercial to permit the personal wellness business. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing now, and I'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak against the Anthony Cove proposal. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the Anthony's Cove proposal. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the Anthony's Cove proposal. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the Anthony's Cove proposal. No, no, come on down to the mic. I'm going to need your, get your name and your address, please.
My name is Tricia Perry. This is my husband, Jeff Perry. We are the property owners of two-two-four Anthony's Cove Road, and we certainly support PAC and staff recommendation around the rezoning, and thank both staff and PAC for their work on this file.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions. Oh, yeah, there, hey, Counselor Harris? Yep.
Just a quick comment, more than anything. Good to see you again, Tricia. This is a great plot. I love this plot out there, so it's really amazing to see what you're planning to do with it, and it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of effort to go through one of these, so just want to commend you on that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have some concerns, Tricia, actually, today, from some residents. They were wondering about, like, size of signage, about lighting. There was concerns about there being so much possible, potentially, a lot of lighting in the area. They did have some traffic concerns, so I know that you don't have a lot of clients, so if you can speak to that, that might be great. But just wondering, what are your plans that way?
Yeah, sure. Do you want me to speak to that?
So, the lighting, we're going to try to keep it as natural as possible. And that's the goal with everything, just to keep it as natural as possible.
One resident said, like, maybe motion lighting would be better. Is that something that's potentially?
I think just low-to-ground lighting, just for walking purposes, is really all that I'm going to need there. And if there's going to be any other lighting, it's going to be enclosed in your private space that you rent, so it will be maintained in that spot. You won't see, the goal is to not see light from the road. And in regards to the traffic, starting out, it's only going to be rented for twice, three times a week, at two different times a day. So, there'll be six rotations, I guess you could say, for the week.
That was in the packet, so, I mean, I knew that. I just thought, maybe I get you to speak to it.
And what was the other question?
And about signage, I think that residents were worried that there might be some big lit-up sign. But it is a more rural area, so...
Yeah, no, and that's a fair question. The sign will actually just be a little longer. It'd only be like sixteen inches by twenty-four inches. Just small, cute, stuck to a tree, no light around it. Yeah, just a natural light.
Yeah, no, that's great, thank you.
Whatever the streetlights will provide is going to be the only light, yeah.
And I know that you did have consultation as well with some of the close residents, I think. Did you speak to some of the people in the neighborhood, like, very close to you?
I have, yes.
Yeah. Did you have any pushback at all?
They wanted to know when they could book.
Okay, good. Yeah, well, I'm starting to think if I can find some time.
And I think they want to come for free, so we'll have to have that conversation. But the idea, obviously, is that it's a wellness retreat, and so certainly not looking to have a high-traffic area or something that is, you know, commercially advertised in a way that would be, you know, not in harmony with the use of the land, so...
That would probably impose your business plan, so, yeah. No, that makes sense.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application for Anthony's Cove Road. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application for Anthony's Cove Road. And if hearing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and ask the team if you have any questions for staff. Not seeing any, City Clerk, I'll move over to you for motions required.
Just two motions required. Approval of first reading by title, approval of second reading by title for the zoning bylaw amendment.
Okay, so I'll take them, Counselor Stewart and Counselor Sullivan, moving approval by first reading by title, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Darling and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Excellent. Next item, City Clerk. Thanks for being here.
Next is item nine point two, and this is a municipal plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment application at five hundred Pelton Road, Ethos Ridge.
Commissioner Poforov, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. This evening's second public hearing is for municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Don Moore Surveys and Engineering LTD for a property located at five hundred Pelton Road. The application would permit the development of townhouses and semi-detached dwellings on a private street. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to amend the municipal plan and rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Punkage Nalavde, the Director of Community Planning and Housing, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, your worship and council. This is the public hearing for five hundred Pelton Road, also otherwise known as Ethos Ridge, legally known as PID five-five-two-three-eight-four-seven-one. This application is an amendment to the municipal plan to change the designation and a rezoning amendment to rezone the property. The application, you can see the site plan in front of you, the application is seeking to rezone the subject property from its current zoning major community facility, CFM, to low-rise residential to develop a total of six townhousing lots and eight semi-detached dwelling lots in the first phase of development. This requires an amendment to the municipal plan, which would redesignate the subject property from major community facility to stable residential, and amendment of the existing section fifty-nine conditions and development agreement also required. The proposed development also requires a variance from subdivision bylaw to allow for the creation of new lots abutting a private street. This was approved by PAC at its meeting on June seventeenth. The subject property, as you can see, is approximately eight point four-six hectares of vacant land and a woodlot. It's located on Sandy Point Road in Milledgeville. The subject site lies at a transition area. What I mean by that is that the corner of this site is what separates the serviced PDA from the unserviced rural areas. So, north of West Mount Drive, development consists predominantly of single detached dwellings on larger lots along Pelton Road, Beach Road, and Sandy Point Road. And south of the intersection lies the serviced Kennebec Haces Drive subdivision, which was developed in the nineteen eighties with sidewalks and access to seasonal Somerville-Milledgeville ferry. This is a view of the site from the road. The subject site was redesignated to major community facility in twenty-twenty-one, and this change was done to facilitate the development of a seniors' living complex, which has not materialized. The major community facility designation is really intended for larger-scale institutional uses, and a change is required to go to a residential use. The subject property is adjacent to land designated rural residential to the north, stable residential to the south, and is located within the PDA. The area would be considered an extension of the existing serviced residential neighborhoods in the vicinity, which is what the developer is aiming for. Given its location within the PDA and proximity to existing residential neighborhoods, the type of development being proposed, which is really low-rise, semi-detached, and row-housing forms of housing, can be viewed as an expansion of the existing residential development patterns in the vicinity. These areas are within the PDA, generally on municipal services, and have the potential to accommodate additional development at a scale and density consistent with the surrounding context. In terms of policy alignment, policy LU eighty-six recognizes that stable residential areas may include a variety of housing forms and densities. The appropriateness of new development is guided by its compatibility within the existing built form, which is mostly low-rise, and its alignment with the overarching objectives of the municipal plan. Stable residential areas are not subject to specific density targets. The policy encourages flexible development that supports neighborhood continuity. Policy LU eighty-seven supports the gradual evolution of stable residential areas in terms of land use and built form, provided that new development reinforces the prevailing character and contributes positively to the community. The current proposal is consistent with this policy direction, as it contemplates a mix of housing types and densities, and aligns with the low-rise built form found in the surrounding low-rise RL zone lands. The subject property is zoned a major community facility, as indicated before, and the proposed zoning is for low-rise residential RL zone. The RL zone is intended to accommodate a range of ground-oriented lower-density residential developments in a variety of housing forms, including single-unit, semi-detached duplexes, townhomes, and stacked townhouses. This is an outcome of the zoning reform initiative whereby all residential, low-rise residential forms can be accommodated within the one zone, and this is the lowest residential zone that we offer within the city today. So, this, the proposed rezoning is aligned with the development of townhomes and semi-detached dwellings along a private street under the RL zone. In terms of notification, letters were mailed out to adjacent property owners within hundred meters of the subject site on June fourth. There were seven letters of opposition received during the thirty-day public period, and additional five inquiries about the proposed development. The public notice for the public hearing was posted on the city's website on June eleventh, and the PAC meeting took place on June seventeenth. Staff are recommending that common council approve bylaw numbers CP one-oh-six dash four-one and CP one-one-one dash two-oh-four, which would redesignate the subject site from major community facility to stable residential, and rezone the subject property from major community facility to low-rise residential. Staff are also recommending that common council rescind any existing section fifty-nine conditions, which were associated with the previous seniors' complex, which was a much larger and intense facility. So, any previous conditions imposed as of April 6, 2021, in relation to the previous proposal, and impose new conditions related to the extension of water and wastewater servicing for the proposed development. So, the only construction activity that is happening is going to be where the property intersects with Sandy Point Road, and that is really to extend water and sanitary services into the site, which will require a development agreement. Staff are also recommending that the city, upon third reading, cancel and discharge the existing Section 59 and Section 131 agreements, and enter into an agreement requiring the developer to upgrade the existing municipal infrastructure, restore any disturbed streets, and install sprinkler systems in all units within the development. With that, I will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I am now going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application for 500 Pelton Road, Ethos Ridge. If you would like to speak against it, you can come forward. Just give us your name and your address. So, the floor is open. Oh, yeah. I've got a few names here as well, but I'll get you to give me your name just so we can keep a current list of it.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Galbraith, and my address 2100 Sandy Point Road. Think you might have in possession a legal document that I have from my lawyer stating that there will be nothing built on the site that they plan for Ethos going up the hill. Okay?
Okay. All right.
I just want that noted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application for 500 Pelton Road. Get you to come down and give us your name and your address.
I think I'm off of this.
You are. You are, Jill.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address council. My name is Jill Jolino, and I live at 360 Pelton Road. My father, Wayne Jolino, lives at 420 Pelton Road, and I speak on behalf of the two of us. A little over four years ago, Ethos Ridge initial proposal was made to council and approved with Section 59 commitments and restrictions. The current proposal is absent a couple of these restrictions that we believe are critical and should be included with the current proposal before council. As you have heard in the presentation by the city department spokesperson, the original Section 59 commitments and restrictions are to be excluded, and three Section 59 commitments and restrictions are to be included in the new proposal. Two of these echo the original, and one is new. We believe that two more of the originals should be included in this current proposal. No access or use of Pelton Road, number one. Number two, a sunset clause for full completion of the project within five years. The condition of Pelton Road, which is essentially a paved cottage road, with its narrow roadway, steep inclines, short sightlines, tight curves, lack of sidewalks and curbs, makes it unsafe to support any additional traffic. The use of Pelton Road for construction vehicles would further degrade an already substandard surface. Continuing the prior Section 59 commitment to no access or use of Pelton Road is necessary. This proposal does not show a plan for the development of the waterside of the property owned by Ethos Ridge. However, during the PAC hearing, the designer and engineer stated that a vision for the remainder of the property is being considered. The use of the property addressed 500 Pelton Road suggests that perhaps an extension of Pelton Road into the waterside portion of the property is being considered. Additionally, there have been advertisements for the sale of a property off West Mount Drive, alluding to the extension of Pelton Road to meet the property. Bob McVicker was the realtor. The existing 2021 plan shows all development taking place on the riverside portion of the property. It shows the Sandy Point side of the property reserved for the one and only access road to the development. This access road was to traverse the hillside slope to avoid any slopes too steep. The new development plan eliminates the one and only access road in order to accommodate the 40 dwelling units proposed. The two are mutually exclusive. Thus, the new plan, if accepted, would create a landlocked chunk of prime residential land on the waterside of the property, and would acceptance of this new plan not make council instrumental in creating such a situation. If 40 homes are being considered for the smaller portion of this property, it is not inconceivable to envision that a greater number would be suggested for the larger portion of the property facing the waterfront. Pelton Road is not situated or safe enough to carry additional traffic of any large capacity. I do not use the term unsafe lightly. It is hazardous. Let me give you three quick examples. Couple of summers ago, a water truck comes on the road, huge big container full of water, decides to back down the hill. Don't ask me why. But when I hear the noise, I go out. The guy is jackknifed across the road. He's got a huge truck full of water. He has to dump all of the water onto Pelton Road, and it takes four tow trucks to get him out. Wintertime, Irving Oil is delivering heating oil to a woman down the street. The Irving Oil truck, I didn't see him go down the street. I didn't see him deliver the oil, but I did see him parked in front of my dad's house. For a while, I went out and said, "What's the problem?" He said, "Until they come and sand and salt that bleepin' hill, I am not going to even attempt to go up it." Several hours later, it was accommodated, and he left. People with children who come to walk on Pelton Road cannot follow Elmer, the safety elephant. You cannot walk down the left-hand side of the road facing traffic when you go around the corner and down the hill on Pelton Road. Cars coming up the hill would kill you before they saw you, because there's no way you can see, and there's no shoulder, so they have nowhere to go. It's a rock cliff. Four years ago, the planning department, the PAC, and city council recognized that using Pelton Road was not appropriate and indeed unsuitable. We ask that you preserve that opinion and include the forbidding the use of Pelton Road as part of this current proposal. The private road of access to the proposed development is off Sandy Point Road, and therefore, the naming of the property should be assigned a Sandy Point Road number and not a Pelton Road designation. Lastly, the second omission is a sunset clause. Requiring completion of the project within five years, as with the original proposal, is a sensible condition to prevent partial development, possible traffic issues, or an eyesore for the community. If this is not acceptable, then perhaps rezoning only that portion of the property that this proposal applies to, and returning the remainder of the property to Rural Residential would be a good option. When and if a further proposal for the use of the waterfront property is put forward, the zoning of the remainder could be reconsidered. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone else here who would like to speak against the proposal. Come on up. Give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Robert Basilek at 433 Pelton Road. Thank you, your worship and council. A pleasure to speak to you. I have a couple of questions. I'm not really against it. I just don't know what's going on. And the reason for that is I received an email from a person from city, a Thomas Llewellyn, who informed me that this was going to be, and I have the email right here, 14 dwelling units, six townhomes, and eight semi-detached. That's not what it is when you look at the documents that come from Ethos Ridge. It's 24 townhomes and 16 detached, semi-detached. A big difference between 14 and 40. I have some questions regarding, I see, we have somebody here from the fire department. I understand that these buildings were to be sprinkled at the request of the fire department. I don't know if the fire department is aware, but the National Fire Code state that for townhouses, the grade must be 8 degrees, 8% or less. This is 12%. It's going to be an awful lot of fill to fill it. And the other thing, it also requires a turnaround for fire department vehicles and emergency vehicles to get out. It is not included in the documentation here. So, if the fire department feels that it has to be sprinkled, does this mean the fire department will not be attending for medical reasons? I ask that question because we have somebody here from the fire department that maybe can answer that.
Yeah. If council has questions, they'll ask staff, so you're just going to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, as I mentioned, there's actually six lots of townhouses consisting of four townhouses on each for a total of 24 townhomes, and eight semi-detached lots for a total of 16 for 40 units, a lot more than the 14. On the documentation, which, page 134 in the city's list here that he has, it goes Policy LU-87, which states the proposed development of six townhomes and eight semi-detached is an example, et cetera, et cetera. Again, the city's saying there's only six and eight. Is it six and eight, or is it 24 and 16? This is something we haven't been able to confirm. The other thing, under page 137 of your documentation, FH3 and FH4, go on to discuss water flooding issues. As you're probably aware, there's a lot of flooding issues in that area. Perhaps somebody from the city can tell me how much they spent on repairing the culverts, the driveways, and 305 Pelton Road last year. They were there for three and a half weeks doing repairs due to water damage. The area is a flood zone. And this all says the policy is not applicable. Doesn't make sense to me. With the slope being 12 degrees, it's well over what is the National Building Code. Also, I'll point out that, not that it's going to make much difference, but under NFPA 1720, the maximum amount of time for a fire department to arrive with a full complement is eight minutes. The closest fire hall is 13 minutes away, which is a little over the eight, which means other units have to come, which are going to be well over the 13 minutes. They'll be up to 20. This is something that should be dealt with. I'm a little concerned about the information being given to us by Ethos Ridge because we have received nothing. There's been no consultation, not a word from them. Yet, this suddenly pops up every two years, no consultation. I'm a little surprised that this is allowed to happen like this, and that we're also told at the PAC committee that we would not be allowed to stand up and speak. We were told that we had to make a submission. Watching it on TV, they asked for people to stand up and speak. Again, we're being given misinformation. It would be nice if somebody could get things straightened out so we can make a decision. As I mentioned, I'm not against development. I think development is good. But if you're going to develop, develop it properly, and this is not being done properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak against. Come on down and give us your name and address.
My name is Charlene Chase, and I'm the owner of 468 Pelton Road, St. John Brunswick, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Charlene, can I get you to just pull your, yeah?
Oh, yeah. I'm shorter than everyone else.
I think you can probably pull down a bit.
I'm writing to formally express, do you hear me now? Okay. "My strong opposition to the proposed Ethos Ridge senior housing development at 2100 Sandy Point Road originally submitted on January 11, and more recently, the associate application for rezoning to Stable Residential for the construction of six townhouses and eight semi-detached homes, but really totaling 40 units." And that's only for Phase 1 and 2. What does it mean for Phase 3 and 4? There is no information in the package for Phase 3 and 4. I'm going to try to be short because I'm repeating a lot of what has already been said. "My major concern about why an objection: lack of progress and questionable extension. The original proposal from 2021 has seen little to no movement. Why has there been no development over four years? How is it that an extension to 2028 is now being considered when the original project was expected to be completed in 2026? Simply altering the address from Sandy Point Road to 500 Pentel Road while keeping the same PID should not qualify as meaningful progress. Private road. I'm very concerned with the private road that is being suggested. The use of private road is highly problematic. The city of St. John has not approved any private road subdivision in the past five years for good reason. The proposal fails to meet basic standard, including no proper turnaround space for emergency vehicle, no adequate on-street parking to accommodate fire trucks or other vehicles, lack of sidewalk or shoulder space, making it unsafe for pedestrians. Private roads often come with persistent issue, as you already know. And it's unclear how it's going to be maintained, stormwater damage, how is it going to be corrected, access concern for garbage and snow removal, and the challenge for insurance coverage for the homes that will be on that street. Environmental and infrastructure oversight, no clear still in four years, no clear environmental assessment or detailed communication I've been providing regarding water and sewer infrastructure, protection of private wells and prevention of runoff into adjacent properties at the St. John and the St. John River. We already see, like Jill mentioned, water issues on Pelton Road, and it's happening to our own property. Traffic and safety risks, with 40 units planned in Phase 1 and 2 alone, and the possibility of more in Phase 3 and 4, we could be having 200 vehicles on a private road. Most people have two vehicles per homes. This raises serious concern about road safety, especially in a private road not designed for such traffic. Lack of community consultation. Local residents, including those on Pelton Road and Sandy Point Road, have not given an opportunity to speak with the Planning Advisory Committee. The updated proposal now refers to 500 Pelton Road as a development location despite the private road originating from Sandy Point Road. None of you seem to think it's an issue, but it scares us because we live on Pelton Road. I walk every day. I have two dogs, and I have an experience that I had to jump over the guardrail. Thank you. Just a couple of weeks ago, because this car was coming out, and good that I didn't have anything in my ears. I heard the car coming, and he just drove right by me. So, I just experienced it. So, if you guys think it's safe there, come and live on Pelton Road. In conclusion, I do not support the proposed development at 2100 Sandy Point Road or its rebranded version of 500 Pelton Road. I urge the common council to reconsider approval unless and until the following conditions are met. Full public safety measures, included upgraded roads and sidewalks, a clear and enforceable environmental protection plan, infrastructure planning that safeguard local wells and waterways, a reasonable community-supported density of new homes that makes sense for our area, genuine community consultation and involvement before final decisions are made. Thank you for your attention and for considering the voices of the resident who will be most directly impacted by this development. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. I'll ask again if there's anyone who would like to speak against the proposal. Come on down and give us your name and address.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Lovely to see you all. I'm Colin Forsythe. I live at 2151 Sandy Point Road, and I'm sure by now you're all well aware I am an environmental scientist and consultant. And I will briefly reiterate the concerns that I've had since day one regarding the lack of environmental oversight with this particular development. So, definitely in opposition. When it was originally proposed, before it's been rebranded now twice and continually degraded till we have, you know, prefabs, they had done a very basic Phase 1 ESA, which was much better suited for a site that had had previous development on it. This had not. So, none of the correct environmental assessments have been done, although we asked consistently for the past four to five years for the appropriate environmental work to be done, including work to look at species at risk that are present on the site, and how you're going to mitigate that loss of habitat for them or for the loss of wetland habitat that they consistently say is not there, but is. As a provincial wetland delineator, I can guarantee you that that wetland is there, and if you'd like to come out with me on the weekend, we can stand in it. That has still not been done, nor has any work really done to look at how it will appropriately mitigate flooding. In his current plan, it seems that he wants to alter a water course to create some kind of holding pond. I can tell you, I've lived out there for almost 50 years, and for the very first time back in the spring of 2024, my culvert was completely blown and washed out by a rain event. That's without additional development that paves the side of a hillside and cuts all the trees down. So, there's certainly a big flooding risk there. How many times do you want to come and put my culvert back in? I got all day. So, there are a number of concerns with this. Also, his Phase 1 ESA study that was done the first time, those expire after five years. That expired in May of this year. So, no new environmental study has been done or included in the package. No comment on how they're going to do the appropriate wetland delineation or mitigation of any lost wetland. No plan for species at risk, no study whatsoever. So, again, we're considering to see a developer that does not, at this point, I assume, want to do the appropriate steps to make their development move forward. If they did, you know, that would be fantastic, but I have not seen that consistently now. So, I would oppose that. Additionally, how the runoff from that site will affect wells downstream? I can tell you, since other developments have occurred further up in the watershed, my water has changed. I have had to put in additional UV filtration to deal with increasing bacteria in the water from runoff, right? Am I not entitled to safe drinking water? Are the residents not entitled to safe drinking water? Why is the developer entitled to continue to degrade that, and yet we're not entitled to have it, right? That's a very simple thing to ask for, right? So, what I continue to see, indeed, the developer isn't even present. Has he shown up once, ever, for the rebranding? Has anyone seen him? You know, raised your hands, right?
Do you have any other points you want to make?
Yeah. That's basically it. That what I have seen consistently is a lack of engagement and a lack of desire to do the appropriate studies that would give us the information to make an informed decision, and we don't have that.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel Redmond, do you have a quick question?
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Through to Mr. Forsythe, just wondering, do you know with your background, like what animals or at-risk species is there?
I do.
Yeah. Can you share with us?
I don't really want to give him any information. You have to pay for that. You have to pay for that. I have done that study. I can tell you that I have a whole document on exactly what is present there, so I am well aware of it, but it is not information.
Is it extensive?
It's extensive, yes.
Councilor Mead, you can have a private conversation with the proponent here for us. We're talking about the land use right now.
Yeah, well, environmental things are in Plan SJ. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. I'll take the next speaker who'd like to speak against the application. Come on down. Get you to give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Ward. I emailed you folks my own version of my concerns last Friday, I guess. I'm here reading on behalf of Greg Collins, my neighbor who lives at 467, who lives immediately beside us.
Yeah, we've got his letter here. We have a letter here from him as well.
Okay.
That was printed for us.
My name is Greg Collins, and I'm owner of 467 Pelton Road in St. John, New Brunswick. My wife, Alicia Loge Collins, is also owner of this residence. This property is adjacent to the lot next to where Ethos Ridge buildings are intended to be placed. Our property is the most impacted from the current design plan submitted to the city of St. John on January 11, 2021, and the most recent updated proposal. My purpose for writing this letter is to provide notice of my opposition without the proper section 59 conditions and a more clear, precise proposal provided to the community from the proposed redesigned prefabricated townhomes. The original proposal was Ethos Ridge Seniors Development at 2100 Sandy Point Road, and the recent proposal for development of prefabricated townhouses is at 500 Pelton Road. The integrity of the rural area, my backyard and all of my neighbors' yards are in serious jeopardy with the approval of Ethos Ridge new development without proper conditions and assurances. The intent of the proposed development does not take into consideration a voluntary pre-consultation with the Sandy Point community. There is absolutely no regard in these plans for the neighborhood's concerns, which are approved by council outlined in Section 59 from the original proposal, despite the intent from the developer to "we care about the community impact of our project and believe the local residents should hear about it before the formal early steps of planning." Consideration, listening, and satisfying the neighborhood concerns has failed before, and even with years of consultation between council and the neighborhood, has continued to fail. Why? My wife and I are willing to support the proposal of prefabricated townhomes with the following Section 59 conditions. Some have already been noted on the original proposal, and additional conditions need to be sure the developer maintains responsibility of the city of St. John and the entire community in surrounding areas. I am certain the requirements mentioned below are ones the council members of St. John and the surrounding municipalities have and continue to use as responsible city elected representatives who grow our community in the most economical and responsible way possible. The previous proposed development planned on all traffic through 2100 Sandy Point Road, community concern on traffic in general on Sandy Point Road, Kennebeces Drive to the corner of Sandy Point Road and Foster Thurston are impacted significantly, yet none more than Pelton Road. Pelton Road is a former cottage road, six meters in width, resulting in a dead end. The infrastructure of this road has not been updated to support increased traffic flow. The original design of Pelton Road was done in the 1950s and 60s. The safety of Pelton Road is a concern for my family and for, including my two children and all the residents of Pelton Road. Section 59 of the previous proposal slated for Pelton Road was not to be used, no access to Pelton Road or no extension of Pelton Road. Why is the request for 500 Pelton Road being used in the most recent proposal? The representative from Don Moore could not provide a reason during the PAC and leads the community members and council in entirely misleading direction. 2100 Sandy Point Road is the axis of the said land and roadwork, and this condition must be implemented into the most up-to-date Section 59 conditions. Sunset clause. The sunset clause has not been updated, maintained, or mentioned in the most recent PAC meeting or plans of the proposed development. Sunset clauses are important conditions set by council and other affiliates to maintain integrity, scheduling, responsibility of developers, and to protect city landscapes and communities within. Without one, development can take several years to complete, miss budget expectations, and even total project abandonment without accountability to even the city and our beloved community in total disarray. We ask these conditions set to two years or December 31, 2027, consider existing timeline is October 2025, for the first phase completion presented by the developers hired by representatives from Don Moore Associates on last PAC. Private road condition of Section 59 to be implemented as of July 7, 2025. Why is the city of St. John allowing a developer to implement a private road and maintain this private road? The city denied a similar request from private developers. If this decision is approved, then council must add parameters for the developer to properly follow, maintain, and continue to meet. One, private garbage collection of 40-plus homes. I'm sure everyone has reviewed the townhouse proposal and its 40 units total, not what is listed on the website. Again, misleading as developer is not clear. Are there going to be city garbage collection for these 40 private residences, or how will garbage be collected? Private garbage is developers' cost and responsibility and not paid or provided by any city members or associates and are not paid for by the taxpayers of the city of St. John. Grade levels of private road. Fire code is supposed to have an 8% grade, and no mention of this has been provided, no mention of substrate being used for fill requirements to meet this grade, which are very important for protection services entering the road up to top of ridge of the proposed Phase One. The grade requirement must be outlined in Section 59 to ensure it meets its meeting code and not overlook from a developer projected budget costs and ensure project is viable. Cul-de-sac at the top of the proposed road, as required by the city of St. John, to be implemented. The city should be outlining the required cul-de-sac by code so protective services can be accommodated properly. Water pressure. Water pressure was not mentioned previously. The water pressure is required to be a certain level at the bottom of said road and at the top of the road to meet consistency in pressure and avoid the affected current city water and sewage residents. A guideline to meet code needs to be implemented into Section 59. Environmental impact, water and sewer infrastructure. The city of St. John and the province of New Brunswick has an obligation to protect our natural environments such as St. John River watershed. Meeting the buffer requirements, providing a description of well system for this new proposal has not been clear or details have not been provided. How much water is going to be moved into the St. John River system from the proposed building site? Also, how much water runoff will into adjacent properties from the removal of vegetation and substrate overall? The developer must be held accountable financially for all water flow issues to be diverted from a proposed property and adjacent properties. Residents will not accept any additional water on properties because of a project nor any costs associated to moving potential water flows to culverts or overflow systems. What condition will be implemented to ensure water is not running into my property and diverted into proper draining culverts and water reuse systems? How will the city of St. John ensure my property does not undergo loss and well and septic services currently in use? Who will be responsible for potential contamination of drinking water on my property at 467 Pelton Road? Water tests were mandatory prior to the purchase in 2015. Who will cover the cost of any disruption? In closing, I will support the proposed development of 2100 Pelton Road and not the project at 500 Pelton Road. I have outlined some of the most important reasons, of which are direct reflection of public safety, the environment, and zoning within this community. Support for a project can be considered if conditions within Section 59 are maintained as previously outlined and added for additional developer responsibility. Without these conditions, which are clearly to protect the city of St. John's natural beauty and our community, my family cannot and will not support such a project. Regards, Greg.
Thank you. Nine minutes and 59 seconds. Excellent. We're all reading along with you. We've got that letter. Next speaker, please. Joan, I'll get you to give us your name just for, thank you, just for formalities and your address.
Your worship and councilors, my name is Joan Pierce, and I live at 352 Pelton Road. I support my community with its request to reinstate previous Section 59 regarding the use of Pelton Road to allow access to the site. In other words, don't allow any access to 500 Pelton Road. Don't even use the address 500 Pelton Road. There is no 500 Pelton Road. While there is no opposition by me to residential development in principle, on this property, several important concerns have arisen regarding the current proposal. These concerns have been addressed to council in letters and in previous speakers tonight. I have the same concerns, but I don't want to take all your time. I mean, they're identical. Everybody who has spoken, everybody who has written are expressing exactly my thoughts. My most significant concerns pertain to fire safety, the environment, and stormwater management. The fire department was informed about the development and expressed concern that the private street leading into the site is too steep for a fire truck. They recommended instead that each unit be equipped with a sprinkler system. However, I'm unsure whether the fire department was actually aware that the total number of units is really 40, not 14. I attempted to clarify this by phone, left a message, but have not received a response. I can't believe that the fire department would allow a development where you couldn't access your truck if there was a fire. Anyway, as a resident of this neighborhood, I would like to see written confirmation of what was reported to planning staff regarding the fire department's position. The reason I'd like it in writing is so that if there is some serious thing that happens, we would know who is responsible. Specifically, I'd like clarity on whether they consider sprinkler systems in each unit a sufficient safety alternative, given that fire trucks and other emergency vehicles may not be able to access the site. The proposed plan involves removing a substantial group of trees at the top of the hill to create views of the Kennebeces River. This raises a couple of issues that I'm aware of. I know that the Department of the Environment prohibits the tree removal during bird nesting season, but, you know, Colin has absolutely said everything I guess there needs to be said about the environment. But I'm concerned that the trees and their root systems help control stormwater runoff. The introduction of paved streets increases risks in winter as salt and sand used for ice control will be washed into a holding pond and potentially into the Kennebeces River. Runoff during construction period and later after completion may destroy the habitat for wildlife in the river. The environmental impact of this residue is unclear and could lead to pollution. I respectfully request that council require a thorough environmental assessment on this development, if approved, and on any other future development, as the natural environment on this site will be dramatically altered. With the sites changed to hard surfaces, rainwater will no longer filter into the ground, resulting in increased surface runoff. The proposed plan shows a holding pond at the entrance, which would collect surface water. If this pond overflows, water would flow into the ditch along Sandy Point Road and eventually reach the river. However, it seems that no one checked to see whether or not the ditch actually goes all the way to the river. Instead, if you inspect it, it reveals that the ditch only extends as far as through the entrance to Pelton Road. Beyond that, water enters a series of culverts and passes through private property before reaching the river. This situation could lead to flooding of at least four properties, and there is doubt about the legality of diverting water runoff from one property into neighboring private The building of housing and the paving of the street will leave no surface through which rainwater can filter, so there will be much more surface water flowing down the hill. There is also concern that with decreased absorption, the water table beneath the surface may become depleted over time, potentially affecting local wells. I believe that the city has a person designated to deal with climate change and whatever impacts that brings. Since the climate is changing, rainstorms are heavier, trees are going to be cut down at the top of the ridge, and quite a large area will be covered over with buildings and pavement, there will be significant stormwater runoff. Has the person dealing with climate change in the city been asked for his or her expertise in mitigating runoff due to climate change? Could she or he also address what might occur to the water table if rainwater is running down the hill rather than into the ground as it does now? What happens to our well water that comes from the underground water table? What is the city prepared to do if wells in the area run dry? One last point. In the last proposal, the developer was responsible for the installation of water and sewage, and properties along the road from Westbound Drive to 2100 Sandy Point Road would be offered a connection to water and sewage at Ethos Ridge expense. In this proposal, the developer is responsible for water and sewage, but properties along Sandy Point Road between Westbound Drive and 2100 Sandy Point Road are not offered connection at Ethos Ridge expense. So what happened? Why isn't it offered again? Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Last for the next person who'd like to speak against the application.
Hi, John Mowit, 470 Pelton Road. I appreciate the fact that developer has chosen to pursue residential dwellings. I think that's good. It benefits the community. However, that said, I do have some issues. First one is the naming of the lot, 500 Pelton Road. Certainly, in the past, it was 2100 Sandy Point Road, and this obviously raises concerns as the plan to use Pelton Road for future development on the sort of the water side of the ridge. As we've heard from Jill Jono, certainly you can't use Pelton Road for any significant increase in traffic. The plan is to put about 100 people on the Sandy Point side of the ridge, but if you put that many or even more on the water side of the ridge, that would result in huge traffic load to Pelton Road, which certainly you cannot tolerate. So the concern is, why did they change the Section 59 stipulation that there was going to be no access to Pelton Road? Certainly, I think you really safely cannot use Pelton Road for any further development. Another issue I have is obviously with the stormwater management, especially with these increased climate events. The site now is just a steep field, and it's just grass, but the proposal has basically that entire grassy area being made into an impervious surface of paved roads and roofs with virtually no lawn. So it would be a significant amount of overland flow, and we've already heard that the city had to replace the east side of Sandy Point Road all the way down to the river from Kennebeces Drive down because of overflow on that side. Certainly, one would anticipate- Certainly, one would anticipate significant problems now on the other side of the road, on the Ethos Ridge side of the road. There was some work, we heard, that was done at 305 Pelton Road, specifically a pipe that was underneath that property that was plugged was removed. It was a 40-inch pipe. That's been replaced with an 18-inch pipe, so obviously, if there's more flow down that side of the road, it's going to be more overcome by the pipe, which apparently has already happened in the last year. And then, once that water crosses Pelton Road, it has to go through a culvert that's even smaller, and then it works its way down to the river. So obviously, there's concern that the water management system may not be adequate. Certainly, I would suggest an independent assessment of the storm water management system be undertaken before any development is undertaken. Another issue is well water, which we heard of. All the houses on Sienick, Sandy Point Road, Beach, and Pelton Road all have wells, and as such, we've already heard, some people have had issues with their wells already. We'd be worried that this development may compromise even more wells. Another topic to think about is the previous iterations of the development of 2100 Sandy Point Road had a seven-and-a-half-meter setback. The question I would have for the developers, are they still planning a seven-and-a-half-meter setback? Because certainly, some of the proposed Phase 1 and Phase 2 are actually fairly close to other houses, and would they be considering continuing on their plan for a landscape buffer and to keep a significant distance between the neighboring properties? We've already discussed the length of private road, but I think that is very important. The previous development that was going to be the seniors' complex, that had a road that was capable of the fire department arriving there. It was a city road that had an appropriate grade. The current plan seems to have a substandard road that's going to be considered a private road, as it's not up to appropriate standards for the city and the fire department and the city. It's just, to my mind, it doesn't make sense to have a workaround putting sprinklers in a row when you don't think a fire truck could get there. I think it's safe to say the fire department does a lot more than just put out house fires. So if there's an emergency, a medical emergency, and one of those 100 people that live up that hill, you'd hate to think that a fire truck wouldn't be able to go up to help those 100 people living there. And certainly, the other concern we have is that private road will eventually become a city road, and if it's a substandard road, does the city want to have the liability of having yet another road that's similar to Pelton Road that's just not capable of tolerating much traffic? So I would suggest that if this development was to go through, the road should be able to meet the city standards as well as the standards of the fire department. So in conclusion, I am in favor of development that fits into this neighborhood. The development should not compromise the safety of people driving on Sandy Point Road or Pelton Road. It shouldn't cause flooding and damage to the adjacent properties, and it certainly shouldn't compromise the well-being of 100 new residents in the area. Thanks.
Thank you for being here this evening. I'll ask for the next person who'd like to speak against the proposal at 500 Pelton Road. Our list is checked off of the registered speakers, but I don't know if there's anyone else here that would like to speak. So I'll ask again if there's anyone who would like, left who would like to speak against the proposal. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against the proposal. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal for 500 Pelton Road. Go on down and give us your name.
My name is Isaiah Reed, and I'm with Dahlmore Surveys and Engineering. And I would first off like to say thank you to the staff for all their efforts thus far with the package that has been coming along and mainly this evening addressed concerns of the neighbors and hearing and understanding some of the stuff that has been going on. This is a lengthy file that has had history that predates myself, but we are hoping to address some of those concerns. To start off with some of the concerns of Ethos Ridge, the first thing I do want to address before we go any further with anything is that the access point to this will be off the Sandy Point Road. Our plan is to not use the Pelton Road. We, from a design point, and the developers also do understand the challenges that would be faced if we're going down on the Pelton Road as well. Secondary, what we have heard from other people as well is how we're going to service this lot, and this is a major question to address this evening as well. What I can offer is that our plan to address the storm water management plan, we have to produce a full set of design reports before it gets any further. At this stage, we are taking a preliminary look of how we are going to catch that water, and our post-development flow levels have to meet pre-development levels. We have to get there with our design report, and that is something that the city staff and infrastructure will have to take a look at, and we have to get approval for that before moving forward. As far as adding any additional flows, that is not a possibility from our end as far as the design report goes. The redirection of water is also something that we don't plan to do. In order to do that, you have to remodel everything that happens after the stream, and that is a fairly extensive process that we don't want to do. Keeping the direction of flow is always suggested, and from us, something that we would like to continue with as well. The sanitary for this development is going to be serviced via a gravity sewer system that will be collected from the top run down to a private pump station from there at the entrance, where we will then pump the flows up to up the Sandy Point Road to the intersection of Kennebecasus Drive as well. Again, there was a preliminary look from myself, the engineer team at Dahlmore, on where we were going to contain the storm water as well. So having a storm pond at the entryway at this time is what we are looking at. How big that pond has to be in order to maintain the discharge of the post-development flows is also something that will be included in the full set of design drawings as well. And the public water mains that will be run down as well is something that we have to look at. I just want to jump to the servicing that was on there, and then I will go back, but as this is a main concern, I do kind of want to get these points across to you all this Yeah, so the servicing of the water main as well, and there was talk about the connections going across, and I would just like to offer that, you know, the developer is here this evening, who is planning to speak as well. And so from our side, we are going to be addressing these concerns. There was also a purchase agreement that was put in place between the developers that you heard the first thing as a concern this morning, and there was a letter sent in via lawyer. And again, this may be something for the developer, but I feel important for everybody to be aware of, is that Scott and Ian, the team, has been in contact with Darryl, so much as so, I believe it was yesterday, but again, I will allow them to further iterate, that he had spoken to them, and there was an agreement. Well, they are in the process of trying to figure out something that is agreeable between them and where they purchased the land from. And that may include the removal of units on this project, right? And we are still in the conceptual phase of the design. What we're looking to do this evening is rezone this property to the lowest density that there is in the city. That's our main goal for this evening. There was also a number of questions concerning fire, and what I can add is that myself personally, Scott as well, have been in touch with Dan LeBlanc from the city and the fire department to try to come to a solution that is acceptable for this development. The 8% slope, if we were to do that, the rock, the amount of rock that you have to break would be a disruption for years. Like, it's not very feasible. So we were trying to come up with solutions to work with all the parties at hand. 12% is a grade that not only we saw as acceptable, but the fire did as well, and some comments that, you know, and reasons as to why this had come up in an email is that there is an agent, a fire department fleet, and in order to, and this would, and this all came about because that the response times of greater than 10 minutes, anything of that raises concerns from their end, this would allow them to contain, in theory, the fire in the room that it starts in any living dwelling units. There is also, and a part of the reason that this is asked for from the fire department is in the situation that there might be poor traction from a fire truck, and they get up a certain way, and then they have to go up via foot or whatever they do on those heavy trucks if there's an icy road, and this will allow for a greater length for them to actually respond to the housing units. And as far as further development goes, again, in the PAC meeting, I did address this, but I would like to just touch on it again. We understand the concerns of Pelton Road and entering that way. And again, the developers can talk to it as well. Our entryway, and as a few people have pointed out, on a place to turn around for the fire truck, although in its conception phase, we will have to have a turnaround that's at the top that meets standards. That has to happen. This is a visual concept of the area, and as far as what happens with the remnant of the property, nothing has been discussed. We are not, we haven't gone past the ridge at all. That's not to say that we are so naive that nothing is going to happen there. We just haven't even broached that at all. But what I would like to add is that if we were to do that, that would require the extension of public street or street at all, and it would require us to come back here, go through the process again. Everybody would have their chance to have the say if anything else was to be extended. It's not like just because we passed the RL zoning this time that we get to come back and do this all over, that we get to skip this. Like, that doesn't happen. And there was concerns on that being a private road. What I would like to add to that is that, and this was a point last time, additionally, that will be a condo corporation, and in such, the roads we upkeep, maintain, paid with condo association fees for the continuation of whatever happens at the property. Those were the main concerns that I have. Oh, there was timelines as well, and again, the developers can speak to this as well, but we do have that their commitment, that their goal would be to finish this under five years as well. So, you know, having that condition, we don't see as an issue. The last thing was the environmental impact of this property. And Andrew Tool, who works at Dahlmore Surveys and Engineering as well, is a wetland delineator, and in our reports upon moving forward with this project, we 100% plan to delineate this property, understand where its wetlands are, understand what is on the property, and furthermore address that, whether it be via support to Ducks Unlimited to relocate those wetlands or what have you. But at the current state, from a desktop review, this property hasn't been flagged to Andrew to delineate from environmental, so, but we would go forward.
That's perfect. You're just at almost 10 minutes, 9:55.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll take questions, or if we would like to hear the developer speak first.
Yeah, maybe we'll hear from the developer first, if that's all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. My name is Ian MacLeod from 801 Mitchell Street in Fredericton. Happy to be up here presenting a new vision for Ethos to you again tonight. I just going to touch on, I don't have a big spiel all prepared, but I'm just going to touch on a couple of the points that were raised here earlier. So the first one regarding, it's just three points. So the first one regarding the road. The steepness of the road is a concern for us as well. The recommendation for dealing with this is to add sprinklers to the buildings under NFPA 13D, which is the residential sprinkler code. We got that from Dan LeBlanc at the fire department. So the main reason to do that is to, excuse me, the main reason to do that is to lengthen the amount of time that the first responders have to respond to a fire on the site, and they're quite effective at doing that. So the second thing I wanted to bring up was the legal agreement that we have with the Galbraids. So Scott talked with Darryl regarding the sightlines to the property, as I understand, yesterday. We're aware of the legal requirements that we're subject to under that agreement, and I thank Marilyn for raising them here tonight. So as I understand, he's been in active discussion with the Galbraids regarding removal of some units and possibly adding some visual barriers to accommodate their needs on that site. Those discussions are underway. We're committed to reaching an amicable agreement with them by the time that we start construction and development. And the third thing I wanted to bring up, because it was raised by every single one of the folks that stood up to oppose the project, was that there's no current plan for development of anything that connects to Pelton Road or the lower portion of the property at all. So it's a challenging spot to reach from anywhere but that spot, and I understand that. The entry to the proposed development right now, as shown on the site plan there, is going to be Sandy Point Road. There's no sneaky Pelton Road access kind of in the works here. So, and the reason for that is, you know, there's a challenging servicing consideration that makes that future phase potentially nonviable. We need to get servicing down there, down over the hill, and that's quite an expensive thing. It may make that development further down the hill nonviable. And at the PAC meeting, I guess it was indicated, and I was listening, I wasn't present at the PAC meeting, but I was listening in on YouTube, and I heard it was indicated that there's a formal process that needs to be followed for that, if we ever want to extend another street off of Pelton Road in the future. In addition, it's going to be a condo development, so future phases that are not part of the initial offering do need to be approved by the residents on the site as well. So there's a whole process to doing that, and we'll cross that road when we come to it. We're committed to following the required process, and we'll certainly speak with the neighborhood and consult with the necessary authorities and permits and council and PAC when the time comes. Thank you very much.
All right, I've got a quick question for you. What's the value of the project right there that, as it stands right now?
Exact value of the project?
Well, yeah, around the value of the project.
I actually don't have that number in front of me right now. I'm sorry.
I didn't see it in the kit, so I was just curious if you had it or not. Okay, you've got a couple of questions here. Counselor Sullivan, you're up first.
Thanks, your worship. I appreciate your explanation with regards to, you know, 500 Pelton Road versus 2100 Sandy Point Road. Given that, you know, you have no plans and there's challenge with Pelton Road, what are your thoughts? Because I think it would make the residents feel a little better. Many have asked for it if we were to put a Section 59 on it that said you can't use Pelton Road.
Well, given that there's another process we have to follow to do that anyway, I personally don't find it necessary. If the council deems it necessary, of course, we'll follow along with whatever your recommendation is in that regard.
Okay. If it ended up being another process, part of that process could be arguing the removal of that Section 59 at the time.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. A couple of things. So the going in off Sandy Point Road has been established. That would be a Section 59. You're okay with that?
Sorry?
Entrance off of Sandy Point Road, not Pelton, is a Section 59. You're okay with that?
Yes, if that's necessary.
Water has to be dealt with prior to, that's a given anyway, but you get that.
Yep.
The one thing that surprises me now, and we'll go back to this legal thing, you're giving us this presentation, but you just said that you're going to have to adjust that to meet your legal obligations with Mrs. Galbraith. So how does that change that schematic?
How does it change the schematic? Some of the lowest units on the road, as I understand, are in a sightline to the Galbraids, and we'll negotiate that with them.
Okay, so that's one to say. Okay, so that's one to six, right?
I'm not sure of the exact number, but, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you guys got to figure the legal stuff out, but I'm just wondering how it changes the look. Thank you.
Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, yeah, through you, I can appreciate that you guys have been through it in the last six, seven years, trying to figure out how to get things aligned for Ethos Ridge. But it is concerning from where I'm at right now, looking at a third change order to a development. I mean, as a builder, I know that's going to cost you a lot on your end to get, reorganize your team, and to pay them to do different work than what you started with, or duplicate the work. So I can appreciate that that cost has already been borne to some extent, but there's also a cost to the public, which is our expectations, is also, you know, what we're signaling on land. And one of the issues we've had in this city is around speculation. So I'd like some help coming to terms with this need for a third transition, because, you know, Ethos Ridge and its former designs had its own range of frustrations with the community, especially around the height, the density on-site, the servicing required and all that. Now, this has a different set. It does fit more of the character of the neighborhood. You've answered a lot of my questions. I've been scribbling notes from residents, but you've answered a lot of it, but I can't get beyond this reliability factor. Like, it is up to us to impose Section 59s or suggest them. One of them I'm looking at is an additional sunset clause that further pushes that envelope to communicate that we want serious builders who can build reliably and on time to the expectation that they've set, and we've supported. So that's a very open-ended statement and conversation, but I'd be happy to hear what you have to say about that.
Yeah, well, I can, I guess I can speak about the previous incarnations of the project and why they became nonviable, and it's a very simple reason. The construction costs for concrete buildings especially, for steel buildings, rose dramatically between 2022 and 2024 roughly, over 25% year over year. And it very quickly made the project nonviable. It was one of the reasons we came back to ask for an amendment to the site plan so that we could make, so we could make some changes to the project to make the building cheaper to build. Ultimately, that wasn't possible, even with the, you know, even with the original plans and modifications we were making to it. It just wasn't possible to do a large multi-unit building on the site and support all the servicing that was required. And so that is why, and we hope this is the very last time that we're up here in front of you, talking about this property. We think we found the right fit for the property, for the neighborhood, and also for financial viability, really.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Red, run over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Ian. So first of all, I'm just wondering what kind of consultation you've had with neighbors this time around?
With the neighbors this time around, I believe Isaiah went and spoke individually with neighbors that he was able to access. Isaiah, sorry, from Don Moore, fellow that was up here before me.
Okay, team.
I was going to say, I didn't hear that at all, but, okay.
Okay, and can I finish my statement?
Sure.
So as I understand, and this is from conversations with city staff, the radius that's required for consultation on this type of development or this type of amendment didn't include a lot of Pelton Road, and so the individual residents down there were not consulted.
Oh, there's something right at the back end, but I can't imagine, but...
I think he's talking about the 100-meter radius.
100-meter radius, exactly.
Yeah, there's some that backs right on the other side of it, so I just, I don't really understand that. But is there a seven-and-a-half-meter setback? I don't think so in this, right?
There is not.
Yeah, okay. At PAC, I think you spoke, is it PAC, was it you?
No.
Okay. Well, whoever spoke, it sounded like there's no plan on development on top of this in the future, but there's a good potential. And today you sound like you don't plan on doing any future development, you know, besides this.
I believe Isaiah's answer was that he was not aware of any plan, and that's because we had not discussed any plan with him to develop any other part of this property.
Okay.
And it's because there is no plan to develop any other part of the property at the moment.
And the only other thing that I really need help with, I think, from your side is, there's two things. I'm wondering what the radius is at the end of that road for fire to get around, do you know?
The current radius, right now, it's a schematic plan, so it doesn't include the exact radii for the turns.
Okay, so you don't know.
And for the turnarounds. So I'm not aware of what radius is shown in that plan right now, but it's a schematic plan, so it's not meant to show that.
And the other thing that I need help with is, in the report from your architect, it said 14 units, and there was no clarification in there, but in your presentation, it's clearly 40 units of housing.
Dwelling units, yes.
Why was that not clarified in your report? Because it doesn't look like the two things match when I'm looking at the council packet.
I'm not sure.
It is in the council packet.
It is in their presentation, but in their report, their written report, it's not in there that I've seen, unless you can tell me where it is. I missed it, if that's the case, but I looked through a couple of times. In your presentation, it is, but in the report, it's not. So when I first went through, I thought this was 14 units, and it looks like this when you're kind of looking at things like that, but those little black dots are obviously all the units.
On page 154 of your kit, it has the unit breakdown. It gives the 40 units right there.
Yeah, that's a presentation, I think, Mayor, but the actual report, it's not in there. Is there any reason why that wasn't put in there?
I don't know the reason for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. I think that's it for us. Yep, that's it for questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask again, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the project, come on up and give us your name.
Your worship, and Counselors, Jody Clifford with the Vision St. John. I'll make this brief, just here to support the project. We think it's a good addition to the built environment. I know, especially with staff's support with the servicing to the site, that we can speak to the housing type and format. We know there's a lot of demand for the townhouse product and semis, so we think it'll do well in the market. It's not a large development, in our opinion. It's reasonable in its size. I'm not going to speak to the ecological impacts that were mentioned tonight. The private streets, I know that a lot of developers choose that for me, because an estimate is about just over $5,000 a linear meter to develop a public street with services, so it gets expenses and has these costs add up. It makes projects not viable anymore. So that's one reason that you'll see a lot of development these days coming forward with projects with private streets, which the council has considered and approved in the past. And I know, as it wasn't mentioned by the developer, I'll just add on the sunset clause idea, there are a lot of reasons why developments get delayed. There could be access to labor, there could be supply chain shortages. Let's imagine for a second, a fictional world where there's an unstable political leader adjacent to our country that might have impacts on our economic systems, that makes the economy somewhat unstable and then pushes things into the future. So I would just offer a bit of caution on applying sunset clauses in the assumption that it's something that is the developer's control and not market forces that gear and structure some of the decision-making and outcomes with projects. So just a flag of caution on that before maybe you consider that. And the setback, just to comment off the cuff with that, I mean, sometimes it's, there are questions about why setbacks, the front yard are what they are, and I know that in development, backyards are actually valued more than front yards. It's where you spend time with your family, your community, that sort of thing. And personally, I think front yards are a waste of space. So I'm always talking to developers and asking questions of why don't you push your development closer to your front, to your street, so you can maximize your more social space? But I just leave that with you. Thank you.
Counselor Red, Ron's got a question for you. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Jody. I just wanted to know if there's a reason why you're so confident this will get done in five years? I mean, this is the third time this has been here.
I would say, Counselor, through your worship, that it's the opposite. It's probably true. I have no confidence right now in a market, and I wouldn't want to hold something to an artificial timeframe, because assuming that they're able to do it, when there's so much that goes into a development project that has, it's outside the influence and control of developers, so to say this will be done in five years, I would like to think that it could be done in five years, and I think that's the plan, but there's things in this world you just can't control, and it would be unfortunate if the developer was held to five years, and really, the external economy only allowed it to go forward in three or four years, and the remainder of the project wasn't done, but then he has to lose another year because he's come back here for approval again for the rezoning. And also, just a thought, and staff can add reflection on this, but it's my understanding that if it was to revert in its zoning, you can't revert the property back to rural residential. It has to go back to change its land use designation, realign the PDA as well. So it's not as simple as moving the zoning back, which takes more time again, which the developer loses the project and capital.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Harris, did you? Okay, you're good. All right, I don't see any more questions for you. Thanks for me. Oh, oh, sorry. Counselor Stewart has a question.
Thank you. So, do you have a suggestion for us if you're cautioning us against these sunset clauses? Because we have been bitten a time or two over our tenure in council. So do you have a suggestion for us on what we should, or how we would hold these developers accountable to get shovels in the ground and get these buildings built in a timely fashion?
Through your worship, there's, it's a tricky one. What you're asking is a tricky thing to have an outcome in. Really, I go back to like, I understand where your frustration's coming from, because you want to see things getting done, and it's really a bit of a poker game at the table of how do you know this is going to happen the way it's said to be, that it's going to happen? I take solace in my mind with approaching the application differently. Is this land use appropriate for the land or not? Not is the developer appropriate for the land. If this developer does it, or the next developer, or the economy happens in a negative way that it delays the project for 15, 20 years, the developer's now dead. But do you still feel comfortable with what you decided is a land use for that property? What tools do you have? I'd leave that for you to discuss with staff, but I think that's just maybe changing your perspective on the question.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for questions for you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the project? I'll ask once again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the project for the last time. If there's anyone here left who would like to speak in favor of the project. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask my team, do they have any questions for our staff? Counselor Sullivan, you're up first.
Thanks, your worship. I do have a few questions for staff, and I think it was hinted at, but just to clarify, what would be required should the developer finish what's on the screen there and decide that they want to do more?
Through your worship...
Hold on, we've got to get your speaker on there. There you go.
Through your worship to Counselor Sullivan, they would need a second phase of a subdivision along a private street, and for that, they would have to come back to PAC.
Okay, so it would give residents another opportunity?
At PAC, yes.
Okay, thank you. Lot of questions for the fire with regards to the Fire Department. Maybe we could hear from the Fire Department.
Okay, I've got Jeremy Clacks coming up.
Make myself comfortable. I'm sure there's quite a few.
All right. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Where would you like to start?
There were lots of questions for the fire, just with regards to sprinklers, access, grade, turnarounds.
So I want to clarify a few things. The direction regarding the sprinklers and concerns of the road access grade came from infrastructure development. And that concern was brought up over the, I've heard it mentioned multiple times with the 8% versus the 12% grade. We base our evaluation, a technical evaluation of these roads based on the geometric design guidelines that are provided by the Transportation Association of Canada. These are standards for road design across Canada, and our subdivision bylaw requires that these standards are applied to these roads. So in that context, those guidelines give some discretion to designers to assign maximum grades depending on the use of the road. For a local, undivided urban roadway in mountainous terrain, up to 15% grade can be permitted. 8% is the industry best practice, or best desirable amount for access by large emergency vehicles, fire apparatus during inclement weather conditions. Exceeding 8% does not mean that any apparatus cannot access that street. It just means that there's a slightly lower, or slightly higher probability during excessively inclement weather that there may be a greater difficulty of access. But I want to put in perspective as well, 12%, Chipman Hill, look at Chipman Hill, that's 12%. King Street is 8%.
Okay.
So, just to give some perspective.
Yeah, I don't like Chipman Hill. Okay, but that's fair, I appreciate that. Last question, Stormwater.
Yes.
Certainly a concern, and there have been a few projects that we have had come before us where the recommendation from staff has been 125% protection versus what's currently in our policy, 100% protection. What sort of things would you consider when that recommendation is made, and would any of them apply here?
I think we need to take into context the previous application that did have that 25% increase. I believe there are a number of existing issues that were identified downstream that were, that I guess wouldn't want it to be addressed as a part of that. I'm not aware of anything, or nothing was brought to the attention of the city specifically that would be cause for concern for downstream, for any intensification of those, I guess, those rainfall values. That being said, we're going to be implementing changes that will be increasing those intensity values across the board soon.
So, do we, have we solidified what those recommendations are going to be across the board soon?
Yes.
Are they in the range of 125%?
It's, yes, it's about that. It's going to be.
So hypothetically, if this was to show up a year from now, our standards would likely be 125%?
Of what we have today, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And one other thing, I did, I guess I should have fully, more fully expanded on the fire protection matter. So, as, I guess there was some conversation with the developer concerning the, I guess, the access road grade. And so the concern that I had brought up was with respect to industry best practice of 8%. In lieu of the 8% for the best practice for access, we opted to go with a risk mitigation strategy that was agreed upon with the developer to implement these residential sprinkler systems for these Part IX National Building Code buildings, not Part III. So the, any access requirements of the National Building Code do not apply.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so questions? Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, I think, Jeremy, you did a great job in answering a bunch of them that I had, so I'll punt you, and I'll bring up Punkage if that's okay. But thank you for that. I might have one to come back to, but I think you got them. Punkage, if we're not using Pelton Road and there's no consideration here, why is this given the PID or the address that it's given? Because this is, I'm still not understanding that. There's just no, there's no reason why it should have this address.
Hang on for a second.
Upon the screen here, but you can see there's a cul-de-sac that actually goes right into their property and has been carved out. So when GIS was giving addresses, they essentially picked a point on 500 Pelton. It's right carved into that parcel and named it 500 Pelton. So as this subdivision, you know, gets subdivided, each of those lots are going to get newer addresses. Some of them might be, you know, Sandy Point something, or it would be some sort of a lane XYZ. So it is really just an addressing exercise and not too much into it.
I get it, so they're all going to get different addresses. So just to confirm, we are not connecting to Pelton Road?
We are not.
And we are not going to be using Pelton Road? Okay, that answers some questions. Do we need a new environmental impact assessment on this? Because, you know, I take consideration to what Mr. Forestyce was saying about them expiring. In a lot of senses, we don't need, but there's these tipping points, and I don't remember where they always land, because they change around subdivisions that require it and subdivisions that don't, because there's lots of development we do that doesn't require full-scale environmental impact assessments. So can you tell me about that?
Through your worship, Counselor Harris, Phase 1 ESA really looks at a desktop level if there is any contamination on that site. That's what it's really intended to do. For the most part, if land is stagnant or an agricultural farm, and it's going to a non-industrial use for the most part, really, we are not suspecting too many contaminations, and therefore, we don't get into owner studies. Now, there is a previous study in place. It may be five, older than five years, and that's a standard criteria. A simpler solution would be them going back to the consultants. be them going back to the consultants and saying, can you validate or revalidate the findings of the study? And that way, you can get that same study revised.
And so with regard to all of that, and this is a summary question, maybe my last question, Mayor, with regards to all of those pieces of the puzzle, there's, and this is my understanding, so correct me if I'm wrong, there's still a lot of work to be done on getting to the point where they can submit an application for a permit that staff would sign off on. And that would include water courses, environmental impact, and there 's just a lot of work left that they have to do to put, for Amy's department to sign off on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And those would, a lot of the guidelines people are citing that need to be achieved would have to be achieved, or else they would not receive a permit.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, deputy question? Get the deputy organized. There we go. Hold on. We lost the screen there, deputy.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, we've learned a lot here tonight, Punkage, I'll tell you. So we learned that it's not going in off of Pelton Road, it's going in off of Sandy Point Road. But I don't know why we didn't know that before coming here tonight, but anyway. Does that need to be an item 59? Because it's so kind of uncertain in our presentation here, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't make it more concrete.
Stopper against Section 59 until we investigate and find a reason for it. So a few points that I can offer. Physically, it is next to impossible for this development from the top to connect to something at the bottom. Right? They're at totally different locations, at totally different elevations. One is way at the bottom, the development that's occurring is way at the top. If they were to investigate additional phases in the future, what may be, they may want to look at the possibility of a second exit point, may in the future if a second phase is viable. So if you were to put a condition today, it would have no impact on what is being proposed. They can, of course, come back and ask to rescind the condition. I'm only concerned about the added bureaucracy that everybody has to go through, and developers looking at such conditions as a, as a, you know, not having that opportunity to investigate second access in the future. That would be my only, only concern. Other than being a condition on paper, it doesn't really achieve anything material on the ground.
Okay, so I'm back to being confused again. So are we entering this PID from Sandy Point Road? Is that a yes? We are going to do that? Like, because that's what I'm, that's what I'm understanding now. I thought it was going to be entered off of Pelton Road, which I didn't think was a great idea. But then I heard that it's going to be entered in from Sandy Point Road.
It is going to be accessed from Sandy Point Road. There is currently no exits planned for Pelton Road. All I'm saying is that putting the Section 59 to not have a second access from Pelton Road essentially becomes an exercise in paper only. It has no meaningful outcome. Having said that, if the development was to explore a subsequent phase in the future, they may need a second, second exit from that property. And that would be the only reason why I would recommend not putting any Section 59 conditions.
Counselor Redwin, question? I'm going to do comments after this.
Yeah, I have a few, Mayor. So the big question is, where is 500 Pelton Road, Punkage?
500 Pelton Road is right in the cul-de-sac.
So just, is it the part that has the dead-end road sign?
Yes, it's right here.
Because I know the area. So what's weird about it, just for council to know, is the 500 is coming before 470 or whatever, which is Dr. Moat and Mrs. Rolfe's house. So it just, first of all, it didn't even make sense to me, because it's coming before.
So I appreciate everyone's confusion with the civic addressing. Back when this was initially being looked at with the seniors' facility, this was part of 2100, which I believe the individual here lives there. So this parcel was subdivided off. So when it was subdivided off, it needed to be given a new civic. Our lovely GIS people create administrative civics that are essentially placeholders, so that everything isn't labeled zero in our system, so that we have something to reference if we do have an application or an inquiry, or need to develop a file in our system. So they did a placeholder of 500 Pelton Road.
Yeah, and you can get to that driving down Pelton Road.
You could in a way, but it does stop, the cul-de-sac was never constructed. So council would have to grant consent to any developer who is looking to build the cul-de-sac for Pelton Road to make it actually accessible from this lot, or actually any of the adjacent lots.
So is there a way for us to actually have it as an address on Sandy Point Road? Is there, is there a reason why specifically?
This is completely an administrative process where they assigned it a number without thinking that people would take that civic address number and assume that that is prescribing a certain type of development with access off of a certain lot. When the site is developed in the future, whether it's through this project or another, official civic addressing will be assigned by GIS based on emergency service requirements. So in this case, let's pretend the private street is named Maple Grove Lane. All of these lots could have then an address off of Maple Grove Lane. And it would be then easily identifiable separately to indicate that you have to go onto a separate street off of Sandy Point in order to access those units.
So are you saying that somebody else has the address 2100 Sandy Point Road? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Then I do have other questions, Mayor. I don't know.
Go ahead.
Nobody else is, okay. About water drainage, Jeremy, if I can tap into you a little bit. So just so I can understand, it sounds like the water would be drained out Sandy Point Road and then finally end up somewhere in the Kennebec Lakes River. Is that right?
I would have to review the, the conditions for the area to determine exactly where site runoff currently goes. But it does appear to collect in the drainage just from the side of Sandy Point Road and be directed down towards the Kennebec Lakes River.
Because that has triggered something else for me, because we've already had discussions about Lentook and all of that. So that would be really good for me to understand that there's not more water going down there to cause more flooding down the road. And then, is there other thing for you? Well, I was wondering if, is there an EIA that's going to be triggered? Because, I mean, some of the residents have 50-foot well water. So 50-foot wells. So I'm just wondering, is there a certain time in this process that the Department of Environment will get involved in this, or no?
I do not believe that this, this development meets any of the triggers or requirements that would necessitate an EIA under provincial rules.
And the development is right at the ridge, right? Like, right before the hill. So there would probably be runoff from clearing that out.
Yes, there would be. But the, as a requirement of any development at the, at the building permitting stage, so once we get past rezoning, the developer is required to submit a Stormwater management plan that will contemplate how runoff from the site is collected and attenuated and released in a controlled manner so that it does not exceed the capacity of any downstream sewers. This is standard across the city. This is a standard requirement that we have on every development.
Yeah, I get that. Unfortunately, that subdivision with Lentook was built a totally different time, and
Correct.
there's challenges down there now. So that's why I'm asking. I know what, going forward, like, we would have all these stipulations. The other thing that I'm wondering is if there is a certain radius required for fire to get around there that would be stipulated with staff, like, because it's going to go through building for approval. Is there a certain radius? I don't know if the chief maybe has an answer for me. Because it doesn't look very wide, like, the plan that they had with the...
With the radius, you mean the radius for the road design?
Yeah, like, fire needs to be able to get in and out of there. The whole area is surrounded by trees. So it doesn't matter if you have a sprinkler system in-house, if the trees, God forbid, catch fire.
I think it's, it's important to put into context that, and as the developer mentioned, this is a conceptual plan. So we're not, we're not evaluating the plan that we're seeing on the screen. This is a representation of what they want to ultimately develop. But any of street access would be subject to review through infrastructure development. And we would, we would submit that to the other departments for their review and comment as well. So ultimately, that radius would have to be sufficient to be able to accommodate the largest vehicle that would be expected to drive on it. In this case, probably a ladder truck.
I have a lot of questions, but it's a third conceptual plan, and it's not all matching up for me.
I'm going to, over to the chief now, actually. I'll get the chief to add on to this. Chief, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just kind of wanted to provide counsel some clarification on why Jeremy was speaking for fire. And Jeremy has been working closely with our staff, and so really is more apprised of the situation and the numbers than I would be. So he's certainly very, very well spoken on this one. I would offer that, yes, anything that comes forward has to meet the requirements for emergency vehicles, for turnarounds. And, you know, the, I think it needs to be said as well that the 12% grade is challenging. It doesn't mean that a fire truck can't access that site. So I think that's an important clarification piece to make as well.
Thank you. Jeremy, we've heard a lot about fire and the risks and that. Does the Pelton Road have hydrants on it?
No.
Okay, okay. All right. Water's, it's all available. Just have to pay to pipe it out there to you. All right. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm going to go around, I'm going to ask, is that, are we done for questions? I'll ask for comments now, if anybody would like to comment. Counselor Sullivan, you're up first.
It happens to PAC from time to time, and I don't know, remember us doing it much at council, but I know it would come with third reading. But I guess I would recommend, I, these, this is the missing middle that we need. We've approved a lot of apartment buildings. We haven't approved a lot of houses. And it's a lovely location. But I would, I would offer that, notwithstanding the advice from staff, that a Section 59 with regards to staying off Pelton Road, even though it just goes into the trees, it's something, it's a small one. We've got the writing done from the last one. So it, you know, it's a copy and paste. It's not a lot of work to put into here. And if somebody decides they want to do something later on, they just have to argue that it has to be removed. And I guess, we have said, council has said, PAC has said to any and all developers to build a relationship with the neighborhood. And I think what I've seen is evidence of the developers still struggling to build a relationship in this neighborhood. You know, as basic a question is, because if you call it 500 Pelton Road, and I know that's the designation, but if you can't do a good job of communicating that we won't be going off Pelton Road, it's really off Sandy Point Road, I think we need a Section 59 saying we will not be using Pelton Road. The other piece I would, I would like to see, and hopefully council would agree, Gretzky said, you know, go to where the puck is going. And the puck on Stormwater is going to 125%. So I would like to see that standard applied here as well. So I'm okay with actually everything we've seen in front of us with the clarifications if those two Section 59s would be added.
Thank you. Deputy?
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, we come into this thinking exactly like a resident, you know? It's going in off Pelton Road, and it's part of Pelton Road. And we hear that Pelton Road isn't a very safe place to walk on right now. And so, you know, my red flag goes up, and I'm happy, I'll get you to explain that. But, you know, I agree. I think that we need a Section 59 to make that solid. And, you know, I get the argument behind a five-year sunset. But, you know, to Counselor Stewart's point, you know, that could, that could be extended under certain circumstances. But it's also a motivator to get going on these things, you know? And I would really like to see a five-year sunset put on as a light of encouragement. The water plant, holding pond, that's going to have to work out before they go anywhere. So, I mean, the experts will look after that. But, and I really think that, you know, if we're spending a lot of money in water runoff on Pelton Road, replacing cul-de-sacs and stuff, that we need to sort of red-flag that and see what needs to be done to cut back on the number of visits. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Sullivan. I do think we need a couple of insurance, item 59s on this. Thank you.
Counselor Darling?
Thank you, Your Worship. I won't be too much of a parrot, but I definitely agree with both Counselor Sullivan and the deputy. I think while, for the developer, operationally, these Section 59 clauses may not make much of a difference. I think what it is going to do is add a level of security for the folks here today that will help them know what's happening and what's going on. And that, no one will be going down Pelton Road, even though that's not the plan. Just to provide that little bit of security, I think, is important, especially in a case like this. So for myself, definitely the Section 59 around Pelton Road. My grandmother lived there most of my life and have been there many, many times, and not a place I would want increased traffic for sure. And I also see the benefit to the sunset clause as well, and would be an amendment that I would support because, again, we all know life happens and things are beyond our control. And I think for developers, as long as you can show that it's beyond your control, we can roll with it. But just making sure there is that little bit of pressure to be moving forward on these projects, I think, is important.
Thank you. Counselor Redwin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify, I'm not going to vote in favor of the development, even though the size of the project meets the neighborhood. Things are just not lining up, and that's a problem that I'm having with this. You know, for a report to say one thing and a presentation to say another, that does not suit me well down the road. I don't want staff to have issues with things not lining up correctly. So that's a problem that I have. However, with that said, I'm very happy if anybody wants to put a motion on the floor to support Section 59 conditions that Counselor Sullivan and the deputy have recommended. I think it's absolutely essential. So I would certainly vote in favor of those to support the neighborhood.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Yeah, thank you. I'll support the proposal. And I will support the Section 59 to an extent. I won't support extending a potential change to our, to our water management systems that potentially might be 125. I don't think we can impose that on this developer. We've had developments in the past six months, three months, two months, that we haven't done that to. And I think it's a bit disingenuous to throw it on these guys now, because we might be doing it in the next six months to a year. These things get delayed, they get changed. It's, it's just something I'm not comfortable doing. We have to communicate clearly is what our expectations are. And I think this one's just too much of a one-off. But I will support a Section 59 around a sunset clause. I will support a section, because we need to make progress. We need to see progress on this file. Progress has not been here on the file. And if ever there was a reason to put a Section 59, it's because you're questioning the developer's ability to make progress. In five years, God, you should be able to make a fair bit of progress and have some pads on the ground, I would hope. But those would be, that would be where I'd stick with. If the staff want to come back with recommendations, if Counselor Sullivan wants to put motion by motion, then I can support a sunset, and I can support a, you know, not using Pelton Road. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I'm going to throw my two cents of comments in here. I always like to do that, especially for a contentious item. But Millishville has two of the greatest amenities any city can ask for. They have a hospital out there, and they have a university out there. And that hospital's been out there for just over 40 years. And the Uptown was devastated when the hospital left. And you've got Waterloo Street, and part of that has been a result of the hospital leaving. That whole area was vibrant, that mall was amazing. That's out there. And Millishville has never really grown like it should have with two of the greatest amenities that any city could ask for. The regional hospital has 5,500 employees, 525 beds, they have outpatient clinics. The catchment population is 170,000 people. It's the largest tertiary care hospital in New Brunswick, probably the only one with that designation. And it's a major referral center for trauma and And it's a major referral center for trauma and cardiac care in New Brunswick. And when you look up tertiary care, what that is, it's highly specialized medical care, usually over an extended period of time, that involves advanced and complex procedures and treatments performed in medical, by medical specialists in a state-of-the-art facility. So people, I mean, we want to attract physicians, you want to attract people. I couldn't get the numbers for St. John, UNB. They had just the whole thing lumped together, so I don't know what it is individually. But if you want to get, attract people, you need places for them to live. And people have said that they've been on the Pelton Road for years, so the Pelton Road must be a great place to live. And so Millageville is a great place to live. We're seeing that demand time over time of places in Millageville. So I'm happy to see this growth. I would be voting for it if I have to vote, but I see I don't, I've seen Counselor Norton's there any longer, so I won't be voting on it, but I'm happy to see the growth. We need that growth, we should have that growth. We're way behind in our growth with those two amazing amenities that we have in that area, in my opinion. So I'll leave it at that, but I'm supportive of the section 59s if we want to go that route as well. So I'll hand it over to the city clerk to see what we have for motions available. Oh, sorry. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Well, really just a procedure question. Where section 59s are completed at third reading, given the feedback here, would staff be coming back with wording for what's been suggested, and then we can take them piece by piece at that time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, good. Okay, do you want to read us what motions we've got there?
Yes, so just four motions required. So for the municipal plan, we need approval of first reading by title, approval of second reading by title, and the same two motions for the zoning by law.
Okay, so I'll take a motion for approval of first reading by title. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Low on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Ogden and Counselor Redwan opposed. Motion carried.
And that's titled, "A Law to Amend the Municipal Plan by Law."
I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Harris and Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Ogden and Counselor Redwan opposing. Motion carried.
"A Law to Amend the Municipal Plan by Law."
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the zoning by law amendment, to approve first reading by title. Counselor Killen and Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Ogden and Counselor Redwan opposing. Motion carried, carried, sorry.
"A Law to Amend the Zoning by Law of the City of St. John."
And I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Ogden and Counselor Redwan opposing. Motion carried.
"A Law to Amend the Zoning by Law of the City of St. John."
Okay. Do we need a five-minute break, or are we good? All right, do we need a five-minute break, or are we good? Are we good? We're good, to keep going? Five minutes, okay, can we take five minutes? All right. All right, five-minute break. Thank you.
Call a recess. Motion.
Oh, we, motion through recess, Counselor Sullivan. I like that, too, and I'm going to use Counselor Redwan, since she needs it. Okay, folks, it is 37. 37 minutes. Call a recess, maybe just do a five-minute, okay, got it? Make sure we're done. Who's missing? Can I call my team back? Who's am I missing? Okay, team, can I call the meeting back to order, please? I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I'm just waiting for Counselor Ogden, I think. Oh, here he is, Counselor Ogden. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. City clerk, next item. Oh, no, sorry, there's Counselor Killen right there. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Next is item 9.3, another public hearing for proposed municipal plan and zoning by law amendment with PAC report and staff presentation for 1384 Lattimore Lake Road.
Okay, over to Commissioner Pofenbrad for the intro on this one.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. This evening's third public hearing is for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Tom Cole for a property located at 1384 Lattimore Lake Road. The application would permit the development of a mini home park on a private street. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee. Included in your package is the staff recommendation to deny the application and the PAC recommendation to amend the municipal plan and rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Director Nalavde for the staff presentation. Thank you. Over to you, director.
Thank you, Commissioner Pofenbrad. Good evening, your worship and council. This is the public hearing for 1384 Lattimore Lake Road, PID 55203095. This, again, is an amendment to the municipal plan to change the designation and a zoning amendment to rezone the property. This application is seeking to amend the zoning by law to rezone a portion of the subject property with an area of approximately 9.8 acres from rural R zoning to mini home park RP to develop a 17-unit mini home park. This requires an amendment to the municipal plan, which would redesignate a portion of the subject property from rural resource designation to rural residential designation. This property is located approximately five kilometers outside the primary development area on the east side of the city, near the intersection of Lattimore Lake Road and Eldersley Avenue. The subject property is a vacant flag lot, and it lies at the eastern edge of a predominantly rural neighborhood that ends to the north and west of the property. Flag lot is just one very front, where a lot has been subdivided, and you have a narrow access to the larger lot at the back. These are some views of the site. In terms of the municipal plan, the subject property is currently designated as rural resource, portion of it is designated as park and natural areas, and portion is designated as rural residential. The front portion of the property along the road falls within a drinking water reservoir buffer, and is therefore designated as park and natural area, shown in green on the site. This designation will remain in place to support the protection of source water. The presence of the watershed buffer on the property raises additional concerns regarding the potential impacts of the proposed development on water quality and ecological integrity, which would be consistent with the environmental protection goals of the municipal plan. Approximately 1,500 square meters of the property is designated rural residential, and you can see that in terms of hatches. This, the development pattern along Lattimore Lake Road indicates that rural residential designation extends from 130 to 200 meters deep from the road. That's sort of the belt that has been developing along this road. This also suggests that during the adoption of Plan SJ, a deliberate decision was made to limit the depth of residential development in these areas to prevent sprawling growth. And that was the reason why that designation exists up to 200 meters. The majority, majority of the property, specifically the area proposed for redesignation, which is shown in hatched red, is currently designated rural resource. Lands under this designation are primarily intended to accommodate resource-based uses such as forestry, gravel extraction, wind and solar energy farms, or pits and quarries. While limited residential and other land uses may be considered, the intention for the designation is pretty much to preserve the land for resource extraction-related activities. A redesignation of the rural residential designation would be necessary to enable the proposed subdivision of the subject property. However, rural residential designation is specifically intended to accommodate unserviced residential developments located along the, outside the PDA. Really, it's talking about low intensity on a large lot. That's the kind of development that's contemplated. While the designation permits development on existing or previously approved rural residential lots, policies do not support expansion of the rural residential designation to new areas. Again, this is intended to limit sprawl. Given the property's location outside the PDA, its proximity to existing residential neighborhoods, and the nature of the proposed development, redesignating the site to rural residential could be interpreted as an expansion of the existing residential pattern. So you will start to see more densification if we set this precedent. In terms of policy, policy LU14 establishes that rural residential area designation is intended to support existing rural residential development with the creation of new lots generally discouraged unless previously approved by council. While development on existing designated lots is permitted, the overarching objective is to maintain the rural character of the area and limit further develop, further expansion. Policy LU5 further clarifies that redesignation to rural residential will only be considered where there is existing rural residential development that was either unintentionally omitted from the designation or to formally recognize illegally established land use. So really, it's about legitimizing past developments that have existed and have gone through some, some administrative error and whatnot. Although approximately 1,500 meters square of the subject property is currently designated as rural residential, the prevailing development pattern along Lattimore Lake indicates, sorry, I am just repeating my point here for whatever reason, sorry. The subject property is currently zoned rural RU, which supports resource-based activities like extraction, forestry, and other limited residential uses. They could have one unit on a very large 5,000-square-meter lot. The proposed development requires a rezoning from RU to mini home park in order to develop a 17-unit mini home park. As a requirement of the RP zone, communal well and septic systems are also being proposed to service the proposed development. So that is just onsite communal servicing, which the developer will have to service from time to time. It is not connecting to city systems. In terms of notification, letters were mailed out to property owners within 100 meters of the subject site on June 4th. No letters were received in opposition as of this presentation, and public notice for the public hearing was posted on the city's website by June 13, and PAC the public hearing was posted on the city's website by June 13, and PAC meeting was held on June 17. Staff recommend that common council deny the redesignation of Schedule A of the municipal development plan from rural resource area to stable area. We also recommend council deny the redesignation of Schedule B of the municipal development plan from rural resource to rural residential. Lastly, staff also recommend council deny rezoning of the subject property from RU to rural residential. Now, at the July 7 PAC meeting, PAC recommended or voted in favor of this development and against staff recommendation. They have voted to approve the redesignation of Schedule A and Schedule B of the municipal plan, and they also recommend common council approve the rezoning of the subject property from RU to rural residential. That more or less concludes the formal presentation component of it. I just want to maybe spend a moment about the conversation at PAC. I think the big disconnect is when PAC considers an application like this, they are looking at an application that is providing its own private road, it's doing its own garbage pickup, it's doing its own snowplow, and the question becomes, what is the impact to the city and infrastructure? The answer to that is long-winded and not direct, which is this: we are really trying to manage a very, very large geography in the city, and when we speak of a neighborhood for intensification where we want to see development, we are saying that because we have services there, we have transit there, we have schools, hospitals, all the amenities that people and families need to live a healthy life. When developments such as these show up, they're five kilometers outside the PDA, it's an unintentional outcome, its land is cheap and therefore the project becomes viable, but in return you have a number of residents living at urban densities in locations way outside the city are entirely dependent on vehicles to get to all of the services. So while it may seem upfront as cost-effective, there is an overall impact to these sort of communities. And the other issue is we are surrounded by cheap land outside the PDA. The moment we say yes to one small 17-unit development, we are concerned that there are other developers targeting much, much larger developments in these areas, predominantly for the same reasons that land is cheap out there, there is no servicing, so it's easy to develop. But the outcome is more sprawl, and you get people living in areas we are not intending for residential activity. So that's really summarizing the disconnect between the two US council members, having a much deeper dive into the council policies, and I've been seeing that for a number of years, something that the PAC may have limited exposure in relation to this theme. So happy to answer any further questions on this one, but that concludes my presentation.
I'll do questions after the public hearing, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the municipal plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendments for 1384 Latimer Lake Road. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the application for 3184 Latimer Lake Road? And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application for 1384 Latimer Lake Road. Not seeing anyone, so I'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of 1384 Latimer Lake Road. Get you to come down and give us your name. Was it this one?
Yeah, sure. Okay, perfect, thank you. Good evening, my name is Thomas Cole, good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about an innovative solution that we believe can help alleviate some of the housing challenges in our city, which is modernized mini home communities. Unlike a mobile home park, these will be permanent dwellings on a fixed foundation with the goal to bridge the gap between apartment living and homeownership. As we know, the current housing crisis affects many in our community. Young first-time homebuyers are facing soaring prices that put homeownership out of reach, while retirees often seek affordable, low-maintenance living options that still offer a sense of community and privacy. Mini home communities offer a practical, sustainable, and community-focused approach to these challenges, and four main points that I just want to touch on real quick. Affordability for first-time homebuyers, mini homes with their smaller footprint and efficient design drastically reduce construction and utility costs. This lower price point creates an accessible entryway into homeownership for young people starting their lives. Owning a mini home builds equity, in turn helping families and individuals establish financial stability. Second point that I'd like to address is that a mini home community can be an appealing option to retirees who want to downsize. Retirees often want to simplify their lives in reducing the burden of home maintenance without sacrificing the dignity and comfort of a private home. Mini home communities provide this balance, offering private outdoor spaces, gardens, trees, and natural buffers that typical apartments cannot. The community design fosters connection, security, and shared amenities while respecting individual privacy. The third point is the community and sustainability for the city. We feel that these neighborhoods are designed with shared green spaces and pedestrian-friendly layouts, which encourage social interaction, healthier lifestyles, and a stronger sense of belonging. Environmentally, mini homes use less land and fewer resources, contributing to sustainable urban growth and reducing our city's ecological footprint. And then the fourth and main concern right now that we believe we can help address with this project is the housing crisis, and by integrating mini home communities into our city's housing strategy, we can diversify housing stock, reduce pressure on the rental market, and support demographic groups often underserved by traditional developments. So in conclusion, we believe modernized mini home communities represent an affordable, flexible, and community-oriented housing solution that aligns with our city's goals in inclusive growth and sustainability while at the same time creating tax density for the city on undeveloped land with little to no investment on the city's side. That's it for me, I think Brendan's gonna go through somewhere.
Yeah, Mr. Cole, we do have a question for you, Councillor... Oh, did you want it, Councillor Harris? Yeah, okay, sure, keep going if you want.
We're just gonna go through this PowerPoint real quick, and then...
I know it's been a long night, so I'm not gonna take up too much more of your time. A lot of what is in the slides has already been discussed, so I'm gonna just skip through if that's all right, and I'll get more to the product that we plan to bring. So this page here is just illustrating how far out it seems to be, like it's not actually that far to get to this park. There's actually another park that's one and a half kilometers away, and it's only an 11-minute drive from McAllister Place Mall. The surrounding area includes forest, rural houses, and not a lot of other things that are really affected by us, so I don't see anything major that's gonna be affecting the city. So the plan is to do 17 units, it's not gonna be like a traditional mobile home, it's gonna be a small house more. So these things will be sitting on their own frost wall or slab, and they'll be constructed with 650 to 1,000 square feet. They'll have their own tree lot, so people will have their lawn, and it's private, we're planning to keep as many trees as we can. If you see the diagram here, the engineer diagram, where the top right corner of it is, that's where we're planning to have a, like our sewage treatment facility, because we have to have one well and one sewage treatment facility. And in that area, we also had the concept that if we can make sort of like picnic tables, some paths, and just sort of outdoor space, so everyone has an area to be with their dogs or whatever it might be. This is a few, just the concepts here. Brad will speak further to this, but the far to left picture is here, sorry my mouse isn't carrying over, but he actually built this already. This is a little bit smaller than we're planning, but he's built this and he's using it as an Airbnb, and everyone who's gone there has gone to sort of experience small house living to see if they could downsize, and it's a little better than an apartment, which, Gary, you mentioned that you've approved quite a few apartments over the last little while and not so many single-family homes. I'm a Realtor, and personally buying a house, my house I had to pay 40% over asking, and a lot of the other houses that I've put in for clients or friends who have offered on houses, they get 20 offers, and anything that's 350 you know is going for 450, 500, and any new construction is 500 to 650,000. So that small rendering there on the far right and the one in the middle, those are sort of rough concepts of what we were gonna go with, and that's all I really have for you right now, and Brad was gonna speak further on some concerns that we noticed on... There's a Facebook group of Latimer Lake residents, and we didn't get a chance to speak to them because it was brought to our attention today, but Brad actually took down some notes so that we could address those concerns if they're watching.
We're just gonna get your name first, if you don't mind.
I apologize, I'm Brendan McClure.
Brendan McCluria, I read that in the kit.
Good evening, council, I'm Brad Barrio. I just wanted to go through, I guess, a few touchpoints here first on other developments outside the PDA. I'm not quite sure how to say the road name, Nadinoe, there's seven new properties within two kilometers of where we wanna put this, I guess, tiny home village, if you will. So there's seven new properties there within the last few years, and there's more growth opportunity there. Steel, excuse me, Steel Drive also is another, there's single-family homes within a few kilometers. And then Water Lily Way is just up by Treadwell Lake, there's 14 new homes there, so all within a few kilometer radius. And then the Facebook stuff that we were looking at today, there was some people concerned about the property being near the watershed, and the last meeting that we were here, we were reassured that we're not interfering with the watershed whatsoever as far as our runoff for storm drain and for our sewage treatment. Another thing a lot of people were commenting on on Facebook was that they didn't want another trailer park. I just wanna stress that it's not a trailer park, like we're not, we don't wanna just plop trailers on lots of land, we wanna make them, you know, luxurious and somewhere somebody would wanna live for more than just a short time. Another one was traffic concerns, but I think our demographic would be more towards retirees or first-time homebuyers. It is on a bus route, generally retirees are really not interfering with rush hour traffic. And then, I guess, more or less just like we touched on was the tax base, that we're gonna have 17 new properties, that's gonna increase a fair amount of tax base with no real extras from the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anyone know, I've got a few questions, so are you guys ready? For a few questions, Councillor Harris, you're up first.
Is this your guys' first project together?
These guys have done a lot of projects on their own.
Okay.
Including the old Eris building and...
Because I think this is your first time coming to council.
St. John, yes, we're doing a development up in Depp. And we also did the renovation of the old Eris building.
Can I get, if anybody answering, if you can get into the speaker, it's just that we're being televised and people won't be able to hear it.
So Thomas and I started McCole Group when we moved out here from Ontario in 2020, and from then we've been buying dilapidated apartments and renovating them, we've been buying, we bought a building on Dufferin Avenue that was north end that had one doctor's office and four vacant doctor's offices and then six apartments. We converted those old doctor's apartments to more affordable apartments, and if you see them on market, they're still technically below the St. John affordable level.
Listened to you for Dufferin?
Dufferin Avenue, sorry. And the old Eris building, I'm sure everyone knows that building, the top two floors were completely vacant and very rundown, and we took that, added 15 apartments there. We've got at least two in there that are affordable, there's a couple that are pretty extravagant suites, so it was very difficult with the cost of construction and all that to make them affordable, but by market standards, they are very affordable. And then we have a development up in Depp, that's apartment buildings right now.
Well, I just was curious, because I hadn't seen you before, but this is a great project for you guys to bring us, and I don't know if either of you got inspired by the Tiny Tent experience in Reno, Nevada, if you ever saw that, but this is what it reminds me of, in that small footprint housing on slab, which you just, you don't see a lot of imagination for in the building world or the developer world, so you guys have married that, and it's really nice to see, but go ahead, yeah.
That's a good touch on that, because I built the Airbnb just over a year ago now, and everybody that stays there says, where's the plans, we wanna build this. It's every single person, like 280 stays last year, and I'm sure 200 of them asked for the building plans.
Well, good on you, boys, appreciate it, thanks.
Councillor Stewart, over to you next.
Thank you, Your Worship. Guys, yeah, interesting for sure, so these are not prefab, you're building these from scratch?
They're being, they're being construction, or constructed in place.
So can you give us an idea of an approximate cost that the consumer's gonna pay for this?
So for 450 square feet for the Airbnb that I built, the cost of complete construction, including water services, septic, everything was right around 150,000 for 450 square feet.
Your cost to build?
That was my cost to build.
Your cost to build, so what would that, what are you guys thinking that's gonna sell for?
Well, the numbers that we don't know yet are the...
Depending on square footage?
Well, depending on square footage and the building code, that's changing as well, so if by the time we start to draw permits, that we have to go forward with the building code instead of where we're at right now, then the cost of square foot's gonna change.
You know that affordable housing is a priority for everybody sitting at this council table. Being able to get a mortgage, anybody going out now, I know, I just sold the property not too long ago, and I had 20 competing offers, so the market is tough. People need to be able to afford something that's, you know, 200 grand or less money.
Right.
So this is a... So I can get some clarification, this is a shared sewage deposit or...
It was a requirement from the city that it had to operate as a Berlin Strata, like a mobile home community, and it has to be on, that was their requirement, it had to be one well and one septic, so that's one of our engineering costs, and our engineers actually here as well, which is gonna be our first thing that we're gonna get working on, is the septic system. We've already got a rough concept of it, but we're gonna need pumps, basically, to get stuff from one area to another, and same with the well, and so that's gonna be an infrastructure cost that we're working on that's sort of unforeseen right now, but aside from that, the construction is stuff we've already done in the past and we're comfortable with it, and we think it's a great project.
Thanks, guys.
Councillor Brad, one, over to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, I thought at PAC that you said that some would be available to purchase, but you're hoping to rent them, is that right, or have you changed your mind?
Depending on the situation, I guess, they could be rentals or rent-owned situation, or people, we could just sell them outright, just depends on the cost by the time we finish the project.
Were you planning on maybe keeping some to buy and some to rent, or is there, how did your model, as far as your business plan go, have it set up?
We don't really have 100% guarantee on what we wanna do with them, I guess it's just if we can get the cost per square foot low enough to sell them for a reasonable price and still be able to turn a bit of a profit, or if we can rent them and we have to take a blanket mortgage on all of them to be able to sustain, you know, like, we don't wanna lose money on it, so if we have, if we get in too far with cost per square foot and whatever, then you'd have to, I guess, reevaluate.
Sure. There are concerns, I know quite a few concerns from neighbors, but the main one, I think, is stormwater runoff. So where do you plan on having any of the water run? Would it end up running in the back of properties? There's some properties just next door where I guess water runs through the back end of their property, is that where yours would connect as well?
Right, so on GONB, you can see that the whole property is actually sloped towards the back, so all of our stormwater runoff would run towards the back of the property, and there would be no issue with neighboring properties for stormwater runoff.
The problem is they already have issues, so the other thing that I'm wondering is, would you end up doing your own garbage pickup within, yeah, so there's basically, as far as city services go, fire, police, and that's pretty much it as far as like municipal services? Okay, thank you, and you're correct, actually, there's quite a few subdivisions that have happened after Plan SJ, just for your information, Dolly, All Around, Jadvo, Meredith, those full-on subdivisions that we service have all come after the plan, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions, but I have a quick one. So are they all going to look like, like that wasn't in the kit, the rendering up there, so will they look like that, or what will they look like?
So that one is the Airbnb that I built.
Right, so is that what you're planning to duplicate?
No, it would be similar, but just a little bit bigger, like that, that one's only 450 square feet, and we were trying to aim like a two-bedroom, more around like 800.
All go with like the 12-12 pitch roof on them, or what?
The blue one here on the right is sort of what...
Oh, the blue one on the right is the one you're doing.
That's sort of the concept we're going for, I think that one's about 850 square feet, and we have a few other designs that we like, and I think we'll probably stick to... And I think we'll probably stick to maybe three to four different designs. And so each, so they're not all, it looks like a mini home park where they're, or a mobile home park where it's one, everything looks the exact same, but different color all the way down. We want to sort of switch it up and, and keep a lot of the trees in privacy and have people have that feeling of a, of a home in pri, in privacy and yardage.
So how would you channel the water? Through a ditch, through ditching system? Or would you channel the water?
I think that would be probably a good question for Dan as he's a site engineer.
All right, good enough. Oh, I got the, hang on, the deputy has a question for you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Kind of torn on this one. I love the concept. I love the idea, right? I think it's perfect. I'm a little bit hung up on the location. I'm a little bit nervous of the location with around the watershed. And, you know, top of mind, I got to keep in mind about the, you know, the amount of other contractors that are going to come saying, we want to do the same thing. And then all of a sudden, our city gets bigger instead of smaller. I know it's a gap that you're trying to fill here and I think we need that. But I'm really concerned about opening that door and setting a precedent where we're going to start building all over the 346 kilometers that we got here again. I mean, that's what we tried to rein in with our PDA. So I wish, I wish it was in a different spot.
I think then that's sort of what the city's or the staff's recommendation was at the first meeting. And the reason it was sort of overturned is that not everybody wants to live sort of in that PDA and that density. And like when we're looking at people in retirement communities, my parents live in a retirement community in Florida in the winter. And they're, they're in a spot where it's a little bit further outside from the city and the traffic. And, and not everybody wants to be in that exact area. And I sort of would feel the same way. I would rather live on the outskirts as opposed to uptown. And I think there's other people that just feel the same way about it. And it's, it's a good spot for it. It's only 10 minutes to the mall, which is employment, shopping, groceries, food.
Yeah.
So, and getting back to the affordability thing, I looked at a few pieces of land briefly before I came over and it was like four to six times the cost per acre. That makes it so, like Greg was mentioning, what's your cost going to be? Because it's got to be affordable, otherwise what's the point of the whole project?
Yeah.
If we want to just build homes, we'd be in the PDA and we'd be doing full-size homes or duplexes or anything like that. But we're here to try and get a new solution to try and help people who can't get into the market. Because we, we were young and buying our first house, we were blessed that we got into the market at the right time. But kids that are 20 years old or 23 years old trying to buy their first house, it's, it's not possible. And the other thing with this sort of new construction, I think there's government grants and stuff in place that sort of go towards first-time home buyers as well, where they can maybe get a 40 to 50-year amortization on new construction housing as opposed to paying 150,000 over asking for a 1970s house that you need to renovate the basement and put money into and getting a 25-year amortization mortgage on it. So that comes down to big time and affordability in terms of payments.
I can appreciate where you're coming from.
We even talked to the...
You make a good argument, I'll tell you.
We even went back and forth with the idea of like if, okay, they cost a little more than we wanted to to build or we can't rent them. We talked about maybe even doing a rent-to-own strategy. That's something we've looked at a few times in the past.
Okay, thanks.
All right, sounds good. That's it for questions for you. Thanks, thanks for, thanks for being here tonight. I'll take the next person who'd like to speak in favor of the development. Come on down and give us your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Daniel Houghton from Engineering by Houghton. I'm the engineer you just heard about. I wasn't sure if I should just like pop down and jump in on their presentation or follow procedure, so...
This is, this is good.
I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, but through your mayor, the Counselor Redwan, like the stormwater concerns and I'll test, we'll see if Jeremy agrees with me here. But if I, my memory on the stormwater drainage bylaw is accurate. But, you know, we're going to be obligated to, to look at where the water's going today and keep it going in the same places it's going now in no more quantity than it's going there currently. So I'm, I can, I know that's the boring engineering answer. But, you know, we take that quite seriously and we'll do everything we can to make sure that the city staff and that the stormwater bylaw is upheld. Any other?
I don't see any other questions for the engineer on the project.
Oh, come on, you got me on, you got me up here. I think it's, I'd like to obviously speak in, in favor of it. I understand the PDA, I would add that, you know, Plan S J was, was intended to be revised or at least looked at again, I think, three or four years ago. Developments like this are an opportunity for the city of St. John for good tax density. And, you know, there's very little that these, these people are asking for from the city of St. John. I respect the, the potential for precedence, but I think when people want to come, come forward, ask very little of the city of St. John and, and are going to put up the, the capital that they're going to put up, like, it's not inexpensive. I think Jody from Envision mentioned $5,000 a meter. It's at least that to build a city street today. And so they're going to build a road, they're going to put in a community wa, well and, and septic system. Those are expensive things regardless. And, and to see, you know, developers want to take that risk and do that in the city of St. John, I think we should be seriously considering that, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, sit down.
Yep, all good. Okay, I'll next, take the next speaker. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the project. I'll ask again if there's anyone left in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the project. I'll ask for the third time, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the project. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to ask my team, does anyone have any questions for staff? I actually have a question for you, Punkich. Oh, there is a question. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Punkich, I'd put you on the spot. Are, are any of our housing grants that we have, I shouldn't say any, I know some of them are, are there any that are not restricted to the PDA? I know I'm putting you on the spot because...
I do not know.
Right.
Honestly, for the most part, most of them are associated with some form of affordability criteria.
Right.
I know there's the construction challenges grant.
Yes.
But again, we would have to see what construction challenges do they have. So we are, we are happy to review the application without any bias, you know, based on the decision. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the site has any rock challenges where we, we could assist with, with the grants.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know that we've just got four or five new streams of housing accelerator grants that would potentially apply, but I just couldn't remember if they were restricted. So anyway, I guess that's over to you guys to check out because, you know, as you build out these business cases, affordability is something we want to see achieved and we put some things in place to try to help people achieve it, so. Great. So that would be good, you know, whenever we get a chance to try to quarterback a project as best we can, so thank you.
Counselor Redwan, you have a question?
Yeah, I would love if, well, first of all, Punkich, what, I guess residents have also been worried about traffic. And, you know, it's 17 units of housing. So what would normally trigger doing a traffic study? It would probably be much larger size project, but, and the only other thing I'm wondering is if maybe Jeremy can elaborate a little bit more on stormwater. Like, what is the city going to require just for residents at home? Because there's people that are watching.
Through your worship, Counselor Redwan, so the threshold to trigger TIS for a single-family home development is 40 units. For multifamily, it would be 90 units.
Okay.
And then with regards to, sorry, what was your question regarding stormwater specifically?
Stormwater, if you can just elaborate on like what restrictions that the city will have on the developer to make sure that stormwater is looked after. There's not going to be any extra runoff onto people's properties?
As with, as with any building permit application, they would need to meet the requirements of the drainage bylaw. They need to demonstrate that there's not going to be any adverse effects created on any other property. They cannot increase the, the, the peak rate of stormwater runoff from the property. And they cannot create any sort of other adverse effects such as erosion, icing, that sort of thing.
For like 100 year, I think, planned, is it 100 years that's in the bylaw right now? Basically like anything that would be in the future with climate change and all that sort of thing. And they have to show their engineer calculations, right?
I have to be careful not to put, give too much information in the answer here. So we designers, stormwater design follows, has to follow two separate systems. There's the minor system and the major system. Minor system is your system of pipes that collect water. That's designed to the one- and five-year storm. The major system includes all of your streets between your curbs, roadside ditches, channels, open channels, any culvers, major culvers. Those are designed at the one, one to 100-year storm.
And this would be a minor system?
It would probably, unless it's, unless it's a pipe system of conveyance, it would be a major system.
Okay, thank you. That's great.
All right.
But any development has both to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Punkich. We always hear about Plan S J and it's, you know, it's adopted in 12 and it's due for a, a reform. But at the end of the day, would we ever recommend sprawl? Would we be supportive of sprawl as we go forward? Would we consider that? I mean, I just think of 315 square kilometers and 78,000 people, like, it doesn't jive the numbers for sustainability?
Through, through you, Mayor, I think some of the principles within Plan S J are quite universal and are unlikely to change. If you are a city that has an economic sort of infrastructure deficit, given the geography that you are tackling with, you're always going to come back to try and squeeze that development into the PDA where your servicing exists. That's really the principle. Even though the plan is 12, 14 years old, if it were to go through a revision, it's unlikely to change. What is likely to change, however? When Plan S J was, was developed and adopted, it looked at existing settlement areas beyond the PDA and it said, we should allow some form of low-intensity growth, which may mean adding another unit, adding a unit for your in-laws or parents or what may be. So that scale of growth and development is contemplated today. We may look at certain areas and say, yeah, maybe the settlement area boundary needs to expand to give a few more opportunities. That's a very case-by-case basis evaluation. But in principle, we would not say, yeah, we are ready for sprawl again. That's not something we are willing to say. And I think this is really a great project. The size looks great, the architecture is great. It's just a matter of location and the precedent. This is 17 units. If we had another 100 units, in many ways, it's taking away development that would otherwise occur in the city. It would be people who would be living in the city and you're just creating competition for yourself. That is the philosophical problem of, of sprawl. And what a project looks really great, you know, five feet from your eyes. When you take a look at the city context, it's a, it's a whole other problem.
Okay, I do have some more questions here. Counselor Killen, over to you.
I actually don't have questions. I was just going to skip to comments if we're ready.
Does, Counselor Stewart, do you have a question? And Counselor Ogden, do you have a question? Or any questions before we wrap up? Okay, go to you for questions.
About affordability. Poverty has grown in St. John. It was the worst year ever at the food banks. And I've been with them 40-some years and this was the worst year ever. And so affordability is something I talk to people all the time about. And the apartments that we're building are 1,700 to 2,200 and people can't afford those things. And we haven't done a good job of, of taking care of affordability. We're working on it. I do agree, I have a problem with, with density because St. John's a ghost town a lot of times, you know, uptown. And, and that worries me. But the poverty thing really worries me in St. John. And part of the poverty is the cost. And these guys have the cost down. Now, one thing I would suggest to these guys, and I've heard it from a number of public hearings so far, is like all the people in Powell Road weren't consulted. And we live in a democracy. And I don't think these guys have done a good job consulting because I was, looked at that Facebook group, but I also got a lot of phone calls from people I know out there. The big concern I heard was the road. How much traffic can that road take? And I think these guys have to sit down with people. And also, I mean, I was up there painting the Lattimore Lake Community Center the other day and the road is very narrow and all it takes is one speeder around a school bus. So I'm kind of divided too. But I, when I see that their cost and what they, what people can afford, because that's the number one issue, I think, well, not number one issue, but it's one of the things that's going to help us solve our poverty. I mean, we have a very low level of education in this city. And I think in some ways that maybe we have to look at this, that we can't just be black and white. And, and, and the plan is very old. So I'm probably going to support it if we can do something about the road. And if these guys go out to the community, they just have a brand-new community center and sit down and talk to people. Because I've seen, like, communication's really poor right now in, in St. John. We've seen it with all the major projects. We haven't done a good job at all. So I think those are some of the things that I would like to see.
Okay, I'm back. Now, I'm looking for questions before we do comments. So you have questions? No, well, I went, I'd like to finish the comments. Okay, you move PAC's recommendation. Is there a second on PACs? Okay. All right. Counselor Stewart, do you have a question?
I will pose it as a question.
I appreciate that.
Punkich, would we encourage, let's just say magically, there was 17 separate people, homeowners, that wanted to build along Lattimore Lake? Would we not encourage them to build their homes? A lot of vacant land out there.
Yes, we would at the density that is currently contemplated. If they showed up with 5,000 square foot lots, yes, they would get one home for 5,000 square, for 5,000 square meters, sorry. But that's, that's the density that's contemplated for the rural areas.
Right.
So there is a way for them to do development where it doesn't look like an urban subdivision, right? That's the character of the, of the region.
So, and I understand that. And, and I don't feel like this is too far off the beaten track. And they've got another access point there with Eldersly out to Lock Lomond Road. And then depending on where they're working or going, they could be heading out to our brand-new roundabout that we're putting in at Lock Lomond and the Arterial. And we know that the airport is, is doing an expansion, right? So there's going to be, regardless, there's going to be a lot more traffic out in that area if we do nothing. So I guess for me, I'm looking at this and, and this doesn't seem like this is the sprawl that, that we're overly concerned about because this is part of a trailer park that's down the street, it's part of the community and it's next to a beautiful lake and they got access to a couple of different roads there. I guess when I look at this, I'm, I'm not struggling that much with it. So, thank you, Punkich.
Commissioner, can I go to you next?
Sure, thank you, Your Worship. And, you know, I, I'm definitely reading the room, but I do just have a couple of comments. Because we've, we've heard the last little while around some sentiment that the plan is old. The plan was adopted in, in 2011 and it is a 25-year plan. And it sets the tone of how you want the city to grow. So we're just over halfway through, takes us to 2036, the plan that was adopted in 2011. A review is required. It's, it's overdue, but the plan, it doesn't, just because a review is overdue, doesn't mean the plan is stagnant. We have made significant changes to the municipal plan since it was adopted in the form of our secondary plans. So your Central Peninsula Neighborhood Plan is a major addendum to your municipal plan. And as you know, we're undergoing a similar process with the North End area. So I don't, I don't, I don't want you to think that it is stagnant or old or we can put it on the shelf and forget about it. The, the principles in the plan are very much still relevant. And at the time of the adoption, the plan represented a real fundamental shift in the way we wanted the city to grow. And it was grounded in a more sustainable and a more compact pattern of growth. And we wanted to target development to support a stronger urban core, creating more complete neighborhoods and communities. And I, you know, I see, this project is a great project. It is not in a great spot. It doesn't align with your plan and it doesn't align with that, those principles of smart growth, which are still very much relevant. So I'm reading the room, but still want to share that information with you for some additional food for thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy, do you have a question or comments? I'm going to get the questions done first. Question or comments?
I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
Because I think it's worth asking. Like, we are in a very unique situation today than we were in 2011. Okay, we don't have the affordability issue, the tents that we have, the lack of housing, all that stuff. This is a great project, you said so yourself. Where would it go within the PDA?
Where would it go within the PDA to be as affordable as it is outside the PDA to make the impact on the community that needs it the most? Like, would it be in the North End? Would it be, like, I'm just trying to think, because really, if there's no other place for it, and it's a unique plan, it's not like I was worried about setting a precedent, but really and honestly, unless it's identical to this, it's not gonna be a precedent. I wouldn't say put a subdivision out there when it could go in Milagio. But I'm having a hard time with this one, as you can tell. Where would it go? If, if you want affordable units that people could move into, it can't go, you know, within the PDA apparently. Yeah, that's my question.
Hey, that sounds like a...
Where would it go?
Oh, Punkich, over to you.
Through you, Your Worship, in the zoning reform that we undertook this, earlier this year, we slashed our lot sizes from 500 meters square to 250 meters square. And we did that by looking at the most compact forms of row houses being built in this country, other provinces, but we literally were looking at 1,000, 1,200 square feet. What they are proposing from 600 to 1,000 square feet perfectly matches with that density. We are trying to change our regulatory framework so that we can accommodate more compact urban form. There are a number of lots within the city, within the uptowns, which are really tight lots. And these homes would be a great fit for something like that. There is a place for it. All I have to say against a project like this is when we place it five, six kilometers outside and we say it's going to be affordable, but we saddle the buyer or the renter with the cost of having to depend on the vehicle for everything and the driving to everything. There lies the contradiction. It is a great project. The Sunnyside Project, although for a targeted clientele, is built on a similar idea to service and have these. And I think there is, there is room for this to infill where there may be land that is not efficiently used. So there is a place for this product within our urban, urban area, within the RL zone. It is possible.
Okay, are we done with questions for staff or are we ready for comments? Okay. The what? Okay, Counselor Redwan, this is like round 10 for you, but go ahead.
Tonight, maybe.
On this item, yeah, go ahead.
Punkich, I'm just wondering. So there are other areas that we've had sprawl since 2011. Dolly, Mallory, Meredith, Jadvo, all out east on the way to their area. Is there a reason, and, and those streets are fully serviced, garbage pickup, plowing, all the things. Is there a reason why that would be done, but this shouldn't be done, when you look at it from that perspective? Like, we've done that already. It's full service subdivisions. They're doing, they're gonna do their own garbage pickup, their own plowing, their own water and sewage. Like, is there any reason for me not to do this because of that? I mean, how can I say no to them unless I have another reason, when it's just about us sprawling? Because we've done it. That's what I'm struggling with. Because I want to follow the plan, but we haven't followed the plan.
I don't, I don't really have a comment for that. It is a true challenge that you are faced with. And, you know, there have been decisions like that in the past. All we as planners can try to do is, is implement policy as much as possible so we can achieve the outcomes that we have been successful in many cases. And we continue to limit this where we can.
And you weren't here then, but...
Eva, are you gonna chat, speak to that?
Can I just, can I decide? I don't know all the streets you've named, but Dolly Drive and the like are within the PDA, which is the, the point. It's the serviced PDA.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start up. Counselor Killen, you're up for comments.
Thank you, Your Worship. I personally, I was torn as well to start, but then seeing it, meeting you guys, I think that was very effective, that you came in to talk to us. But there is, every, every one of our zonings, I think for the last six to 12 months, has been like a puzzle. And it has been competing ideas and realities. And, and to Counselor McKenzie's point about where we are now versus 2011 is so different. You probably wouldn't be here unless it was because of COVID. So, you know, the fact that this isn't otherwise occurring in the city, I think there's a reason for that. And as someone who's searched for a home for a long time, I know this affordability is so critical right now. Even if you're in Martinon, your house is probably 300 to 400,000 dollars for something small. So like, this is not, this is an affordability crisis. And we talk about how everyone bails to KV for the weather, for the affordability, for, you know, lower taxes. Like, this brings that KV vibe to the city. It keeps people inside our, our borders. So I really think that we should be supportive of this and other ideas like it that come forward. Like, the precedent I hope we set is tiny home living is an acceptable thing to do here in St. John, and we want to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. It's unfortunate it went ahead, but, but we did approve one of these for the Grand Bay Drive-In a little while back. It just didn't go forward, right? So, you know, this is certainly something I think council is supportive of as a concept, and not just supportive. I'm, I would be quite excited to see more of this for the affordability. I love the fact that it's designed. We have a lot of subdivisions with big old houses and they all look the exact same. And they're incredibly boring and horrible. No offense to the folks who designed them, but something like this actually really is quite appealing, I think, to many. And Jody Clifford from Envision, and Envision chooses to support some and then not others, but I, he made a very good point related to this project for me, you know, speaking up to the last one, when he said, "Consider the land use, not the developers." I, I would love to hire the three of you in the city to do projects and to keep doing. I love your energy. I love your vision. I love your creativity. I just hate your location. And, you know, like, I, I don't hate this project overall. I, I am gonna vote against it again, like I did at PAC. But I would really, now that I have city staff and the bosses here, you know, these are projects we want in the city of St. John, in the appropriate place. And like, if, if we have, I, I think I sent you out to chase Mr. Clifford last time to talk to him about potential with Envision. Because if, if we have land in the city, or we know of land, like, where this would be more appropriate, I mean, me reading the room, I, my guess is it's gonna pass anyway. But when you're done with this one, I, well, you know, I think that may have been what Counselor Harris might have been hinting, at least in my mind, was, is there land in the PDA that could get subsidized to make it more appropriate? Like, we had, unfortunately, we left, but we had somebody from the province who was connected to the housing file, who was here earlier, you know, because really, back to developers that we want to work with, everything I've heard from you guys, you guys are developers we want to work with and find ways to support and help and continue to do projects like this. I mean, I, I, just for my own principles and Plan SJ and where it is, I can't support this one. But, you know, if there's an opportunity for me or to help you, have council support you guys on continuing to do what you do, I would love to do that. Hope that makes sense.
Well said, Counselor. Commissioner?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, I think, I think Yeva covered it, but just some of the examples that Counselor Redwan brought up, those were within the PDA. They're serviced areas. Not all of them.
Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, I guess I get the final word. Thank you, Mayor. It's a great project. These are political questions, and we are elected to answer them, unfortunately. The plan cannot answer and it cannot comprehend the political conundrums that have come up around housing unaffordability. Because the plan is culpable in creating unaffordable housing scenarios. It just is. And that's why every, every municipality in this country is redesigning its plans. They failed to try to create the environment for the next generation to have access to homeownership. Full stop. So let's not kid ourselves. The plan needs to be reformed. Ideas like this are gonna help us get there. And, you know, you talk about quarterbacking land. It is months and months of process to try to do that. I'm working on two projects myself personally around dilapidated buildings. I'm well underneath the price point of these guys to create affordable units. And it took me nine months to navigate a system to get any amount of contribution to do that. So it is hard work. It takes a lot of time and takes a lot of creativity. And when you see people coming, even if they're a little bit outside the bounded set that we have for what housing should look like, we need to see that for what it is. And that's why I'll be supporting it tonight, because it hits on all the right points for ownership, flexibility around ownership, whether it's rent to own or whether it's purchase outright. And they're tapping into these new amortization periods, which is very important, and no one else is doing. So, anyway.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm gonna throw my two cents in. The watershed is, there's no concern with runoff or storm, runoff, storm runoff or sewage. But when you put a community out next to your watershed, you've got, I don't know, ATVs and all kinds of other things. I think you do put the watershed at risk. And I think it's only one thing that's been examined. So for me, I'm not a sprawl person. I've never been. I'm, I'm a believer in Plan SJ. I wouldn't support it. I love the project. I love the buildings, especially the little black one. The North End is ripe right now for all kinds of development there. There's lots of land there. It's privately owned, a lot of it, but it's not, it's not valued very high. We're putting Main Street in to connect it with the uptown area. And we think about water and sewage. Those are the two, the two big services. But when you put, you, you also have fire and you have police for services and you have roads. And we hear lots and lots about roads. We hear about roads having potholes, so we have to plow those roads. Those are all services. So even though you may put this development outside the primary development area, and it is relatively inexpensive, there's a cost to the city to do it. So you download that cost onto your citizens. The last, the last application we had, we, we told them that they had to put water and sewage in. And so I guess we have to decide, what are we incentivizing here, too? If it's so cheap to build outside of the primary development area, but we want development in the primary development area? We've always talked about an iron ring and how do we, how do, and we can't do it, but how do we create a different tax rate for inside where you have the services versus outside where you have all of these roads? And how do we support 315 square kilometers with 78,000 people? It's just not doable. So I'm, I would vote, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know if I'm voting tonight. Depends on how this all goes. But there's a couple things I pulled out of the kit, that the proposed rezoning to RP Zone would constitute the establishment of a new rural residential development, which is not supported by the policy direction. Plan SJ recognizes existing rural residential development, and it provides clear direction to focus new residential growth within the primary development area. And policy LU 104 prohibits the expansion of rural residential development on the lands not currently designated for that purpose. So for those reasons, I would be not supportive of it. But like I said, I love the project. I'm like, Counselor Sullivan, I just hate the location. Deputy, I thought I was wrapping it up. Back to you.
I know you did. So everybody loves this project, and there's a lot of concern about where it's at. But the city's got lots of land. So if you guys didn't have to do septic system and run water lines, and you could just hook up inside St. John on a piece of property that was provided for you, would you say, "Yeah, we're in," and move it inside?
Can you come up to the... I know, I know.
Just speaking on, you're talking about land uptown, building one of these uptown somewhere or in the North End, like, you don't see the same type of demographic that we're going for. We want something with trees that are gonna create privacy and give you that feel of an apartment outside of the city, like you'd live like it's an apartment, but you have the feel of your own home. So we think this, the, the lot is a perfect fit for it. It's a perfect fit to try the model. And if the model does work out, then we're open to do it again somewhere else and hopefully in a spot that works better for you guys. But we think it's a perfect lot to try the model out on.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. So I'm gonna call the question. So all in favor? Want to read that motion? It's in your kit. The PAC recommendation.
Your Worship, so there would be four different motions needed. One to approve the first reading of the municipal plan.
Yeah, but the motion is, hang on, what's the PAC one? So you, you know what it is, the PAC recommendation. Counselor Lowe's gone. Yep. Counselor Norton's gone. He's on a flight. Okay. So we're, hang on, I can find it right here. Are we all, all good? Yeah, read it out loud, what the motion you put on the floor.
Thank you. So the municipal plan amendment, as PAC recommends, is that common council approve the redesignation of Schedule A of the municipal development plan from rural resource area to stable area. And then number two point is that common council approve the redesignation of Schedule B municipal development plan from rural resource to rural residential. And that the rezon, that council approve the rezoning from RU rural to mini home park residential RP.
Okay, so city clerk, we got four motions, you say?
Yeah, so it equates essentially into four motions. We need to change, to amend the municipal plan and zoning bylaws. So by approving first reading, and we had a mover and a second.
And a second, yeah.
Then we can proceed if you want to take the over.
I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Just you? Okay.
It's titled, "A Law to Amend the Municipal Plan Bylaw," and now another approval of the second.
Approval of second reading. Counselor Harris and Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Sullivan, motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Okay, and then for the zoning bylaw amendment, we need a, a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Darling and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Sullivan. I'm with you though, Counselor. Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
And I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Killen and Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed. Counselor Sullivan, motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw.
All right, you're on your way, folks. Excellent, thank you. Don't forget to come back in another location, too, because we want two or three of those. Okay, city clerk, next item.
Uh, next.
Hey, what about 10 o'clock?
Yeah, we will require a resolution, Your Worship, to go beyond 10.
What are you doing? Feel like them. Yeah, are we gonna get it? I feel like I could go home right now. The what? There's a lot of speakers. We want to finish it up. Do we want to go past, I'll need a motion if we want to go past 10. Well, we have one public hearing left, and they've been here all night. How many speakers do we have up there? Can you put your hands up? How many? One, two, three, four? Oh, yeah, that's four. Four, okay. Well, all right. Past 10. Jeez. God, the clerk stands up at 11 and leaves. I need a second or on that. Counselors, okay, on the question, all in favor? Opposed. Counselor Sullivan's opposed. I'm with, with you on that, too, I think. Okay, city clerk, next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the last item on the public hearings, 9.4, it's a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with PAC report and staff presentation for 859 San Cove Road.
Okay. Commissioner, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, Your Worship and members of council. This evening's final public hearing is for a rezoning that was submitted by Rick Turner for a property located at 859 San Cove Road. The rezoning would permit, would permit the development of three multi-unit residential buildings in addition to the existing daycare center. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee. Included in your package is the recommendation to rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Yeva Matson, the planner on the file, for the staff presentation. Thanks. Thank you.
So the proposal before you is to rezone the site from Neighborhood Community Facility, CFN, to Mid-Rise Residential for the development of three multi-unit apartments that have approximately 120 units between them. This would include all required parking, landscaping, and an amenity space, and it would keep the existing daycare. The subject property is located near the Duck Cove neighborhood at the intersection of Seawood Lane, San Cove Road, and Blurry Street. It was a former school site before it was decommissioned in 2017, and this area is characterized by a mix of housing... characterized by a mix of housing typologies and densities, from low-rise, single-family, to townhouses, to mid-rise apartments. The property itself has an area of approximately 1.9 hectares and would be accessed off of Seawood Lane. It currently only contains the old school building, which has been repurposed into a daycare, and this would remain as part of the development, and only the daycare would be accessed off of San Cove Road. In the first image in the above site photos, you can see we're looking at the intersection, or we're looking at the daycare, sorry, from the intersection of San Cove, Seawood, and Blurry, and that's the existing daycare and its parking, which would just be upgraded with a drop-off lane. And then a couple of the smaller images, just show the site from the rear. One building would sit near that daycare center in the intersection, a second building would sit a little further back, closer to Seawood Lane, and then the final building would sit behind the daycare. And the very end of the site would be for stormwater management pond and trails to connect. Here's another image, just looking down Seawood Lane, at that existing access to the site that would be upgraded. All the multi-unit buildings would be accessed from this access location, and it would be upgraded, including sidewalks to the intersection. The site is designated as stable residential in the municipal plan, which does support this proposal. The most relevant policy is LU 86, which outlines that housing of every form and density may be found, and that the existing neighborhood context, but also compatibility with the municipal plan, will determine the suitability of new proposals. The proposed apartment buildings meet this intent by respecting surrounding varying densities and demonstrating consistency with the municipal plan's broader goals related to housing choice, urban form, and community livability. Other important policies are LU 87, which intends that areas designated as stable residential will evolve over time, and that they should reinforce community character and make positive contributions to the neighborhood. The design and scale of the apartment building does complement the existing scale and density of the neighborhood, and it would make a positive contribution by providing another type of housing. The site is zoned neighborhood community facility, which is intended to accommodate a range of community-oriented facilities, such as the school site that it previously was. The proposed mid-rise zone is intended to accommodate a range of mid-rise and medium-density residential developments in the form of townhouses, multi-unit dwellings, apartments, condominiums, et cetera. And it does accommodate some complementary non-residential uses, so that daycare center would still be allowed under this zoning. And there, of course, are requirements for landscaping, parking, and buffers between the low-rise and mid-rise development. Letters were mailed out to property owners within 100 meters of the subject site on June 3rd. Public notice was posted for this meeting on June 13th. The applicant did do their own engagement. They did door-to-door engagement to a majority of the surrounding neighbors within 150 to 300 meter range, and they did also advertise an open house on May 31st. Four letters have been received as of this presentation, two in favor, one in opposition, and one mostly neutral with some suggesting mitigating impact features. The PAC meeting was held on June 17th. As this proposal does align with all relevant policies, staff are recommending common council rezone from CFN to RM. There is also one small additional recommendation as part of the addressing. GIS has recommended amending the list of official names to add tranquility place for that private access that would serve the three apartments. This is not a recommendation that had to go to PAC, so it was not present there. PAC, while agreeing with staff recommendation for the rezoning, has made the additional recommendation to add Section 59 conditions, mostly regarding the height, and then they have asked for council to direct staff to investigate infrastructure at the intersection, and they have asked council to direct the parking department to investigate concerns from Duck Cove residents. A supplementary report was published regarding these recommendations and how they differ from the staff recommendations, and I'm available for any questions regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. Come on down and give us your name and address, please.
Mark Tricarthen, 1000 Seawood Lane. The property is zoned neighborhood, or neighborhood community facilities. It's the benefit, the community, the neighborhood as it stood, as was stated, it was a school. It had a playground. City, I supervised some of the playground workers, and two of them were there part-time. There was a ball field there. There was a place for the kids to go, play, do things, and the area benefited those that lived there. What's in the zoning is community arena, community center, community policing, crisis facility, culture establishment, daycare, which is there, emergency service facility, library, place of worship, recreation, schools, and supportive facilities could be put in, all which benefit the community as it stands now. It was put in for that. The daycare is a wonderful thing. The kids are out walking, they take them down Seawood Lane, probably down Duck Cove, too, but I live on Seawood. Seawood Lane is very small, very much of a concern with traffic, and additional traffic coming down. But that's not what the center was, the area was put there for. It wasn't put there for the profit of someone coming in and asking for it to rezone it and develop it into a lot of high-density housing from where we are. It does not fit with the community, okay? It's out of place, it shouldn't be there. There were meetings that were held. The members that attended were led to believe, or not, that's not the right, one of the things that was suggested that, under the supportive facilities, was that there could be some type of transition house. Holy God, did that change the tone of the meeting. First it was, "No, we don't want it," and when you start talking possible transition houses, "We can sell it to..." Not, and I will say, the developer didn't do this, in all fairness. It did not come from the developer. But when it was brought down, that was the concern that was given. The mood changed. The people said, "How are we gonna do the least we can, the least harm to our area?" So a lot of them said, "Well, okay, if we can have this put in, then it's not as bad as a transition house." Although it wasn't stated that there were like nine people for the transition house that parked. The area should be used for the benefit. Seniors housing, we were told, might be the number-two option for the developer, which would be great, seniors complex. As I stated before, the property should be used for the benefit of the community, and as was stated earlier by lady over there, that to be more complete for the unity, or for the community, was one of the issues of the plan, the development. This does none of that. You're gonna have a concern with the parking. At the meetings, they asked for two of these 59s, I guess they are, the amendments, one to be 1.25 parking, to which the member, which the people were concerned over, and they could kind of agree with 1.25. Parking's gonna spill out over onto Duck Cove, onto Seawood, maybe San Cove, any other place you can get it. It was stated, "Well, maybe, you know, there're gonna be seniors, they're not gonna need as much parking." Well, seniors are gonna need senior care, most of them are gonna drive. These aren't low-end apartments, probably gonna have dual incomes, the majority, and therefore, two cars. We can say they're gonna take the bus, but they're not gonna, the majority. The parking's not assessed, the traffic is not looked after. Coming up Blurry Street, trying to put a stop sign at the top of Blurry Street or something, the going down, and I'll speak for Seawood Lane, Seawood Lane is definitely not suitable. People will come out of this proposed exit/entrance, they'll do a turn if they can't get to Blurry, they'll turn around and try to go down Seawood to Fisherman's Road, back up, which will be hazardous to all them, all those that are there. I stand opposed to it. However, should you decide to go with it, they're asking to be rezoned into four parts. I would ask that you rezone into one. They're only gonna develop one building. Rezone for the one building. That gives council some control and say, if the building doesn't go as per plan, there was a sunset clause mentioned earlier on the others. You have no control once you give it, once the rezoning goes, other than you're looking at the four units, four levels, sorry, there's no control. There's definitely no reason to rezone the daycare from the zoning it has. It would appear to rezone it into smaller parcels, that the developer is hedging their bet, which I would, in that if something goes wrong, they want to sell it and get out, and they can sell it off. That shouldn't be allowed to happen, and the control shouldn't be there. Again, I stand 100% against it. It's to be used for the neighborhood benefit, and this does not benefit the neighborhood as it stands now. But if you are going to do it, then issue it in such a way that you have control with the rezoning and the subdivision of it. Four parcels rezoned, when they're only looking to build one building at a time over the next few years, city loses a lot of control. Whereas if they rezone one at a time, they have to come back. If they meet what it was done, then the property, the opposition, wouldn't be there. If that is the case, that's all I have to say.
Counselor Ogden apparently has a question. You have a question, Counselor Ogden?
Yeah. Mark, so your major concern is the density, and, I mean, that's a, that's a bad corner as it is, and the traffic at the corner, right?
Well, my major, personal major concern is that the property being redeveloped into these apartments would not serve the community to what it was meant to be for that land, community-based. Senior citizen housing, no problem, library, no housing. But the traffic is a major, major concern. Right now, they're coming up Blurry Street. A lot of traffic's going down to the Irving Nature Park, some's turning onto San Cove and going on the various areas.
On Fisherman's Lane.
They're coming right down Seawood, they're coming down, and they're coming in through Fisherman's Lane, and they're going down Duck Cove. The way it's proposed right now, or the initial proposal, was they were gonna come out onto Seawood Lane. The entrance and exit was gonna be on the Seawood Lane. I, at one meeting, suggested that you at least take the entrance and funnel it so that you're aiming it at Blurry Street, San Cove Road, Blurry Street, so that anyone coming in, that's how they would have to come, they couldn't go around Fisherman's. Right now, there's a loop, Fisherman's Lane, down to Seawood Lane, and back up, that you wouldn't want somebody coming up Blurry Street saying, "Oh, there's too much traffic, I'm gonna make a right turn, go down, hit Fisherman's, swing around up there, and cut back in to beat the traffic," or on the exit, the opposite way around, to funnel the traffic in one direction. There was talk, and I don't know what's been accepted and what hasn't, of making a loop where you would come in through Seawood, and they were gonna put an exit out onto San Cove Road. I do not know where that stands. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other questions for you, Mr. Tricarthen. Thanks for being here. I'll take the next speaker who'd like to speak against the project, please. At 859 San Cove Road. I'm looking for, is there another speaker who'd like to speak against the project? Going once. Another speaker who'd like to speak against the project? All right, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone here this evening who'd like to speak in favor of the project. Okay, I've got a few people. Come on down, we'll start with the, is that good? Welcome.
Hello.
I'm gonna get you, give us your name.
Harrison Fisher.
Your address.
My name is Harrison Fisher. I am the president of the Duck Cove Heritage and Recreation Association.
Thank you.
So that association is a neighborhood association, which is registered as a nonprofit that consists of approximately 150 homes in the neighborhood of the proposed development. Our association has been in existence for over 100 years, and I want to note that the entire development is situated inside the association boundaries. So at the Duck Cove Association annual general meeting held this past June 12th, there were concerns from association members over increased traffic and traffic pattern compliance from these new residents living in the development. Although increased traffic may be unavoidable, how it is managed can be planned for. So we have made suggestions to the developer that we feel could address the risks of unnecessary congestion, including a mandatory curved right turn exiting the property, to which the developer is amenable. Our general meeting, at our general meeting, the sentiment was positive, contingent on Section 59 proposals being made to PAC of limiting building height on the property to four stories, a requirement that parking be no less than 1.25 spots per unit, and the recommendation to council by PAC that a traffic study be completed to study the San Cove, Blurry, Seawood Lane intersection. So the building height limitation and traffic study recommendations were accepted by PAC, but the measure regarding parking was not. For this, the developer has made a commitment to address any strains on surrounding neighborhood street parking overflow by expanding parking availability on the property as needed. Some concerns from the association members at the AGM were around the sole point of entry and exit being onto Seawood Lane, which is a one-lane street that currently cannot accommodate two cars side by side. It's very narrow. Let me just see here, so it has five blind turns, no sidewalks, and has significant daily pedestrian traffic with no reduced posted speed limit. Now, with all that being said, the Duck Cove Heritage and Recreation Association supports the development, and we appreciate the developer's commitment to continue to work to have traffic from the property exit in a way that would direct toward the Blurry Street and divert away from going down Seawood Lane. We also appreciate the developer's commitment to work with the surrounding neighborhood streets, and just to make sure that parking doesn't become a problem. We've had open and positive communication with Rick Turner and Paul Chase, the developers, with a mutual goal of making the best of the new development for its residents and for the residents of the surrounding neighborhood.
Perfect. Thanks for being here tonight, Harrison. Always good to see you. Hang on, we've got a question for you.
Question. So just so I make sure I gather what you guys are saying. So you were saying that the parking hadn't been addressed in what came out of PAC, or what came to PAC? I'm just trying to track that piece that's missing.
So we put that forth, and it wasn't accepted as a measure to be, I guess, suggested to you folks, the 1.25.
So the, the parking reduction?
It would be an increase.
Would be increased from a .8?
From, from one to 1.25.
Sure. There's different zones in the city, I always forget which one's which. Okay, so there's that piece, and then you mentioned traffic as well, as the previous gentleman spoke against it. Did you say that out of the conversations you've had with the developer, that they mitigated enough of the concerns of the community that you were satisfied, or were you looking to get further clarification around some of the traffic realities? Because there was a couple of things you said there, I just wanna track them.
I guess it's tough to say, if, you know, we could wave a magic wand, I don't know if it's necessarily the developer's...
Sure.
...challenge, which is that intersection, but if we could wave a magic wand and just have whatever we want, it would be probably like a traffic circle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or to at least have some sort of analysis around, because if there is multiple buildings being built over phases, we are gonna hopefully see some of that. Okay, just so I can clarify for staff, thanks.
We would, we would love to have some type of study done.
Counselor Ogden, what's your question?
Harrison, did they, this association, it takes in most of the people down on Fisherman's Lane?
That is within the boundary, yes.
Okay. So I go down there quite a bit, and did they think about making it a one-way street, or is that too complicated for the people who live there?
I don't know if residents would. And we'll talk to it for sure. My mom has lived there for years.
Yeah.
I know that that wouldn't be...
Is it so narrow?
Yeah, at the same time, with the traffic patterns the way that they are, and the volume of traffic, unnecessary.
Okay.
So the idea there is like, you know...
So there's too room for two cars to pass?
If this disrupts it, solving the problem isn't turning it into a one-way.
Yeah.
Solving the problem would be, make it so that it somehow doesn't disrupt it.
Yeah, you can't really widen it with the houses the way they're there. So is there enough room for two cars to pass?
Okay, I gotta get us back to the land use.
This is about the land use. Thank you.
Yeah.
Not really. Harrison, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I'll take the next person who'd like to speak in favor of the project.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Say, "I'll take the next person who'd like to speak in favor of the project." I'll get you to give us your name and your address.
My name is Ann Gusterst. I'm at 1069 Seawood Lane. I'm VP of the Duck Cove Association. To answer your question, it's not possible to have it be one-way. To answer your question, it's not possible to have it be one-way. There are several very steep driveways that go one-way and then Fisherman's Lane in the winter is really not traversable for one to two weeks going up. So you really couldn't do it. So I'm here to speak to two issues and the first is to read you a letter from one of the people who couldn't come tonight, who is Dave Teed. You might know his father, Eric Teed, former mayor of St. John and actually ironically the person who incorporated Duck Cove Association. "Your worship and councilors, due to another commitment, I am able to attend in person." He's sailing, so don't feel sorry for him. "My name is David Teed. I have lived on Seawood Lane for 56 years. During that time, I have seen a lot of change in the area. Growing up, there were 10 year-round houses on the lane with eight summer cottages. There are now 23 year-round homes on the lane. Two large subdivisions have been built in that time. The first was the Danles Drive Extension, Allingham Crescent. This was used to, oh, this used to be a cow pasture. The second was Meadowland, also a former cow pasture. Both these subdivisions have one access egress street. I am writing about these changes in the area because I feel this project will be beneficial to the neighborhood as they were to be as beneficial. I just wanted to say I am in favor of this project. Thank you for your time, David Teed." As you heard from Mr. Tricartan, there were two opinions on the development and we all know that development is needed in St. John. I do think some of our, our neighbors were scared by the idea of transition houses. I wasn't one of them. So what I am asking this council to really consider is the recommendation from PAC for the traffic study. That's where my concerns lie. The problems of having the aggr, the ingress and ex egress be solely on Seawood Lane cannot be overstated. Seawood Lane has five blind spots. You cannot pass, you cannot make it two-way. People are backing up on a daily basis to let cars go by. The vast majority of the lane doesn't have a curb. There's no sidewalk. We see pedestrian traffic from all across the neighborhood that come down to the green belt. It's unlike any place I've ever lived before. One of the problems with the way you guys develop, when you do a traffic study, you don't even consider pedestrian traffic. This morning, I counted three separate mothers with little buggies. And it's not a problem for people who live on the lane. It's a problem when people who don't live on the lane go far too fast. It's also the, the combination of this quaint little lane, which actually sounds a little bit like Pelton Road, and the Sand Cove-Seawood Lane Blurry intersection. That intersection is a disaster, which I'm sure you all know. I personally know two people who have been T-boned at that intersection. Last month, Maria saw an accident at that. Maria is my daughter who lives up on Sand Cove at the top. The city knows this because you have tried to maintain an electric warning sign for traffic traveling eastbound on Sand Cove Road, but it got taken out so many times by car accidents you gave up. Prior to me moving there, there was a failed attempt to have a stop, stoplight. That also didn't work. When you look at your traffic study that was done for this project, you will notice that they analyze this intersection as though it's an always-stop, but it isn't. Traffic on Blurry has the right-of-way. And because traffic on Sand Cove Road can go up to 50, 60, 70 kilometers, people don't always stop, which is why we've had so many traffic accidents there. We want the city to look at traffic solutions such as lowering speed limits on all the small lanes. Right now, Seawood Lane, you couldn't drive 50 kilometers on it if you wanted to, but that's the official speed limit, which is nuts. There are other solutions. Realistically, probably the best solution is a traffic circle and right now, you have the amount of property to do it because on the one corner, it's provincial property and you've got the property on the Seawood School side as well. You don't have to do a big one, you could do a two-lane traffic circle. It doesn't have to be huge. But it's really the only solution that's going to solve the problem. However you guys decide to solve it, you've got to solve it because if you dump an additional 48 cars at peak traffic, which by the way, I think is not a correct number, they're going to start cutting around Seawood Lane and somebody's going to get killed. Okay, drop-off lane at the daycare center, I just want to make the point that none of the kids at the daycare center can make use of a drop-off lane. They all have to be walked to their classrooms. So if one of the considerations is you can't have another access onto Sand Cove Lane, that's an easy one. Really would like to see a traffic solution that protects my neighborhood and we would like to work with the traffic department to talk about it. Really would like you to ask them to look at the pedestrian traffic because right now, they, that's not even in their purview at all. And by the way, we have reached out to the city traffic engineer, Mr. O'Reilly, via email several weeks ago and not received any responses whatsoever. Does anybody have any questions? I'm really sorry to sound like this, but thank you for your time.
It's all fine, we can understand you, it's all good. Okay, I'll take, is there anyone else who'd like to, yes, Mr. Turner, you're going to speak in favor. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Oh, Envision, here we go.
I'll, I'll, I'll leave you to say some bits, Dan. Jody Clifford with Envision St. John. I'll make it brief, I know everybody's anxious to get home. Here to speak in favor of this application and, oh, sorry.
Maybe Avast can turn up the volume there or whatever. Oh, you're just too tall.
Gifted with height, I guess. Sorry about that. My name is Jody Clifford with Envision St. John and here to speak in favor of the application. I guess there's a few comments I'll make. There were concerns expressed at PAC as well, we heard a bit tonight about traffic and so forth. I'll leave that to your traffic engineers to, to formulate opinion, although I didn't hear as much about the concerns with our housing crisis which we're also in. And this provides a housing product that's right in the middle of, of what council has stated they were looking for and what we can say is the need out there in the economy. There is a growing, creeping vacancy rate, up over 3% now in the region, but our best data suggests that that's more at the upper echelon of the rental market and not at the product that Mr. Turner is trying to provide in this neighborhood. Fonda Heights is a very desirable neighborhood and growth we're seeing in all of our neighborhoods as the city grows in its population, which is the first time in maybe two generations. And what comes with that is a growing pains of growth. We're going to have some of these pinch points that are going to be concerned, concerns for the community and for council. We have to sort of get our heads around it and how to, how to accommodate that growth, otherwise we're going to have other problems downstream, such as housing. And, and my opinion, this lot is a great lot. It's a, it's a fantastic neighborhood and this lot could accommodate much higher density in my opinion. I was going to ask Rick about that originally on the file, like why are you not putting more density in this lot? It's the best, you think about development in St. John, you're usually dealing with swamp and rock, which we talked about in previous files tonight. This is a flat serviced lot in a stable neighborhood that's around all the amenities. I couldn't think of a better place to, to try to put a higher degree of density to try to build it out. Rick's decided to go to a lower form to accommodate some of the community's interests, which is very accommodating of Rick. I would suggest, I know the camp, or sorry, sorry, PAC put forward a recommendation to limit by way of Section 59, the height of the development to four stories. I'd like to recommend, council, don't, maybe not go forward with that recommendation. Especially when you start thinking of some of the things that are being put forward. Let's increase the parking to 1.25 spaces per unit. We struggled 10, 15 years ago to come off of that standard with the zoning bylaw, or city staff did, sorry, because it wasn't meeting current development standards and patterns and best practices in the cities. To bring that back in, just for this development, you're going to increase the pay space that is required for the development, which means you run off, and Dan will speak to this, the implications of stormwater retention and ponds, the development cost of building parking and at the same time limiting the height. So if costs of labor or supply chains goes up and all of a sudden Mr. Turner realizes he needs to get more density on the lot to make the project go forward, but he can't because now more space is taken up with parking, the cost of it is, is greater and he can't go up in his building height. Now you've, you've constrained the development and he ends up selling it down the road to somebody else and then council blames him for being a pro, a developer that's just being perspective. And so you, you see there's complications when you start adding restrictions and conditions to development maybe aren't necessary. If it's necessary, I fully agree and I, I understand that, but if it's not necessary, perhaps think second about, about putting some height restrictions on it. And I think that was all I wanted to say about it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. I'll take the next person, oh, Mr. Houghton.
Daniel Houghton, Nine Elbow Boulevard, from Engineering by Houghton. So I'm doing the engineering for Rick. I'll be very quick. Jody did a great version of that and he's absolutely right. So I won't repeat that, but I, I will say that when I originally looked at this land, look, you know, I look at a lot of land all over the greater St. John area for multiple developers and I thought for sure, and I think I told Rick, I said, there's got to be something buried in that soccer field or that baseball field, pardon me, because otherwise it's a, it's a really great piece of land. It's flat for the most part, you know, down to the baseball field and we have water and sewer on four sides. Like it's, that's just, it's an anomaly. And so I support the development. I do think that there's some valid concerns from the residents with respect to traffic that hopefully the city takes seriously. And through you, your worship to the Counselor Ogden, I have to just give Rick another, I got to give him kudos on his commitment to the community engagement. I've never worked for a developer who has gone and put himself in front of the community like Rick has on this one and doesn't mean everyone's going to agree with him, but I do commend him for that and I think you'd probably appreciate it as well. That's it for me, unless there's any questions. If there's any questions, I'll come up engineering after Rick presents, I'll be, I'll be here.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Like the next person who'd like to speak in favor? I'll get you to give us your name and your address.
All right. Good evening, your worship and council. My name's Nick Cameron. I live at 106 Honeysuckle Drive. I wear many hats, but here I am tonight just as a resident in the area. I, I love this project and I love the location. We often hear that said in different ways, but I think it's very true of this and we've heard that of the last couple of speakers. There's so much to love about the development, the design and the location of it, water and sewer. Transit, of course, is probably, should have been the first one that I mentioned. It's on a transit route, it's a 30-minute headways, it's a great service, it's the bus that I use and it's a great service. Just want to see more people on it. It, you know, as far as that, again, as far as that location, it, it's going to have daycare right at the doorstep. One point I wanted to highlight with the design, which I want to commend the proponent on, is the pathways that they have through the, the property. It connects to public right-aways on all sides. We don't often see that and it's something that I've encouraged council to make mandatory in all developments. Lacking that, luckily, we had a developer that did it voluntarily, so I commend them on that. We've heard in, through other applications, concerns from council about affordability, about traffic. I think if you're concerned about affordability, then I would, I would urge you not to burden the, my development too much with Section 59 agreements. It can get a little burdensome at times and especially when it's, when it's done on the fly and things like that, so, which I know council's talked about before, you're, you're well aware of that. The, and regarding the traffic, this is related to affordability, if you want more traffic, invite more parking, invite more cars, require more parking. That is what will bring more traffic. No one wants to park, I, I understand the concerns about, you know, perhaps spillage and things like that, but when you think about it in practical terms, no one wants to park two or three blocks away, especially every single day. You want a parking spot right there. So if it's not right there for you, you will consider alternatives, you will consider biking or taking transit, especially when it's at your doorstep and especially with those pedestrian pathways that they, they've considered here. The density, I, I want to see more of it. But again, if, if folks are concerned about that, I think your, your best opportunity, again, rather than putting a Section 59 on there that gets registered on the title and stays there until removed, your best chance to, and Section 59s can be amended as well. So really, your best opportunity is to take advantage of the cooperative developer you have here today and to see what we can do to get that development going as fast as we can and to not get too burdensome with these, with these developments. I want to add to this as well, that I, I do live in the area, that intersection that's been brought up time and time. You know, that's my, my daily commute, so I'm not directly adjacent to the property, but I do commute through this area every single day. And I have a daughter that goes to this daycare. We also, with some parents in the area, organize a bike group, a bike bus we call it. That is our meeting location, we meet at the daycare. So as a parent with a six-year-old that is picking up that child by walking, by biking and by car, well, sometimes I'm stepping off the bus and picking her up, getting right back on the bus when we want to do something uptown. I'm going there by all modes. I have no traffic concerns regarding this development. The access onto Seawood Lane, it's 60 meters down Seawood Lane. It's where there's, like further down, I understand the concerns, there are, it's a major, you know, slope and there are constraints like that, but that's all further down the lane and I, I, the scenario of, of someone going further down Seawood Lane, I personally, I don't understand that scenario. I don't know why anyone would do that. And as far as directing the traffic to that part of the intersection, Seawood Lane has the best approach. It is the best sightlines. You're more constrained coming from all the other side. So I, I would be concerned about directing traffic to Sand Cove Road because that, that access in addition to the accesses for the, the daycare, three, four, three or four accesses, whatever that does in that very short block, it, it creates a lot of potential conflict points, especially if they're going to that, that intersection. That is one of the worst approaches, I guess, as far as sightlines go. The sightlines are much better at the, the Seawood Lane approach. So yeah, that's, that was my comments.
Perfect. Thanks for being here, Nick, and thanks for the shout-out to transit. Okay, I'll take the next speaker who wants to speak in favor of the project. Mr. Turner, you're up.
Your worship, members of common council, Rick Turner, here for 704-987-MB Limited. It's, this is a property we purchased in 2018 and community engagement started then. First off, it was pointed out that yes, the daycare is there. We read it loud and clear, you would like to see that remain. As far as I'm concerned, as long as the daycare operator wants to be there, the building's there for her to lease and end the story. If she ever left, we will probably convert that to residential. The, I, I've got to throw away my notes here because of what's been said, a lot of what I was going to say is irrelevant now. We are looking at the Seawood intersection. We had a traffic study done and it didn't get into the intricacies of remodeling that intersection. It did, it did address the approaches to the intersection. Seawood Lane, we plan on from our entrance out to the intersection, widen that some curving sidewalk. It's not there now and it certainly justified having it in as part of our, our construction. We can take when you have people leaving our complex so that they're not encouraged to go down through Seawood Lane and Fisherman's Lane. I've, I've gone down through there and wondered, why would ever want, someone want to take this as a shortcut? Because there's some cars at the intersection. We can take and shape the curb lines coming out of ours so that you've got a nice flat radius curve for emergency vehicles, fire trucks mainly, and also bring the curbing around and circle back so it discourages that left-hand turn. A sign, no left-hand turn, maybe there should be a sign there, local traffic only. There's ways to mitigate it. The big thing, and I, I stand shoulder to shoulder with these people, the intersection coming up Blurry. the intersection coming up Blurry. You come up Blurry, you have the right-of-way coming through there, but it doesn't look like that on the ground. And, you know, that's where it's been problematic. I think it's that one having the through fair and a three-way stop. Traffic lights, a circle, I mean, whatever you do there will be an improvement. The slide that's up here, that shows the neighborhood institutional uses. And we looked at that and figured, "Well, okay. What would we do off of that list?" Seniors home? Potentially. I don't want to run a seniors home. I'm not capable. I managed a 52-unit apartment complex for 15 years. I'm comfortable there. So the other avenue was, okay, let's rezone to residential. If you look at the R M standards, they also provide for seniors housing. So we figured that's the best of both worlds. That takes a lot of the concerns from area residents of what can go in there. And I've stayed away from saying, "Well, it could be this, that, or the other thing." I just figured, no, the list is there. The people make their own judgments. That's a plan that was presented on March 15. That was in a meeting, the Duck Cove Group. I provided the information, rendering, site plan, stuff like that. That's where we had solidified as much as we could. These are our plans going forward. It seemed very well-received. I just got to make sure I'm hitting the right button here. Okay, what we heard through the years, and this is going back 2018, that was me listening to people individually. Chatted up, "What do you think? What do you think?" When it, come back to it, I figured, okay, let's try to formulate this development around these comments. So number one, people, hey, we want something upscale. Try to keep the density down, okay? We're, would be half the density of what would be allowed on the site based on 120, 130 units. Four stories plus the parking garage, okay? Again, they wanted it upscale. We got looking at that and figured, okay. On the west side, you don't have the same type of construction as Milletville and out east. You know, try to find something with elevators, parking garage, sprinkler system, security. It's just not there in the west side. So we figured, okay, this is something to be built. Are we focused on affordable housing? No, we're not. Affordable housing only insofar as if we can get CMHC financing. They put a cap, a cap on a couple of units per building in this case. So, you know, people paying $1,200, which is a cap that CMHC is presently using. The first in are fortunate. They get those cheaper units. Others are going to be paying something that's not going to have that CMHC backing. I think it goes for 10 years. Exceeding the bylaw parking requirement. My problem with that is we're going to have a lot of accessible units, and there's a big demand for one-bedroom units. If you look at the development on Fairbowl Boulevard, one-bedroom units were gone, just almost on opening. When you got into the two-bedroom, it was a slower take-up. It's because the level of rents to support the new construction pushed the numbers up there. There's no way around it. You've got to finance the thing. So exceeding the parking requirements, the way I look at that is if we built the first building, and if we have the ratio that the city allows, one-to-one, probably that's a little shy. Half of our units would be underground or in the parking garage, half surface. So what I would like to do is I would like to gauge the parking, okay? I know I've got to go one, probably more than one per apartment. But I don't want to be building parking lots and then have, you know, maybe 10, 15 spaces just hardly being used. As a developer, as somebody who's had buildings like that and knows that what you've got to do, end of the day, is rent it, if you create a parking problem on your site, you're going to have a problem renting. So we've got lots of room for expansion on any kind of parking.
I'm just going to interrupt you quick. You're at eight, just over eight minutes. And we're all turning into pumpkins at 11 o'clock, so. And I think it's like 10:40.
No, the, so, yeah, there's, there's a lot more, I could probably say. But abundant green space, we read that loud and clear. We've accommodated it. Trail system, the contribution to the Duck Cove Association. What that is, we're, and I confirmed tonight to Duck Cove, we were going to sign the agreement this afternoon, except I don't carry my corporate seal with me, and the Duck Cove Association wasn't sure whether they use a seal or not. So I said, "No, we can, we can sign it tomorrow." I'm fine coming to this meeting, knowing that, yes, we're prepared to enter into the agreement. The agreement has contributions to the community. It makes us a member of the Duck Cove community. It's a legal document that pulls that together. If for any reason this rental apartments doesn't come to be, maybe we just can't make the financing because we built so much into it, and we've limited ourselves on the floor for stories, then that causes, causes me a little concern. If we had to go to seniors housing, I'd be looking to the Duck Cove Association. Still want to be a part of it, except that would mean restructuring the agreement. I'm prepared to sign that agreement with them tomorrow. And as far as, as far as this goes, I could go on for another 20 minutes, so I better work.
Not going to let you do that. We're just, we're just over 10 o'clock. So I'm going to thank you for being here, and I'm going to ask my team if they have any questions for staff. And then I'm going to go to comments. We're going to go to... Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Counselor Redmond, can you go direct to your question without a backstory here so we can get moving on this?
Absolutely. I just, quick clarifying one. Do you know how much underground parking you're going to have? Underground parking. Do you know how many spaces you'll have?
Average, I'm going to say 20 because we've got different-sized buildings. And with the mechanical space and stuff like that, until you get that ironed out, you can't nail it down. One thing I am going to sacrifice is one underground parking space in each building so that the garbage refuse disposal, instead of having the dumpster out at the end of the parking lot, which is what you'll see on our site plan. We've talked to a company that does that pickup. You take one of the spaces, you enclose it, you put in ventilation. People take their garbage to the, basically to the parking garage. Don't have to go outside.
Okay, so 67 on-street and about 60 underground, so about 127 roughly?
We've got more, we've got more than the one-to-one ratio on our plans now. And I do have slides here that show how much we can expand that.
I just wanted to add guesstimation. Yep, that's good.
Okay, excellent. Getting back to land use. Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, I'm going to... Sorry, I got to close a public hearing. See, I told you, like, it's getting too late for me. Okay, thank you. I'm going to close a public hearing. Got a P A C... Oh, okay, yeah. I've got a quick question for staff. What I want to know is I am also uncomfortable with the Section 59 for the obvious reasons that Mr. Clifford pointed out. I was thinking of that before. So when's the best time to discuss that? It's too late now. Is that like when it comes back?
Third reading.
Third reading. Okay, sounds good. Conditions are always determined at third reading. All right, okay. Counselor Harris?
Yes, I do believe, yeah, Mayor, thank you. I do believe we've done this before, but I would like to direct the C A O to work at this juncture with the community as equipped and as the development kind of in the pipeline to look at that intersection. Because Irving Nature Park, it's main throughway. There's a lot of work that's happened around there. There's a lot of density around there and these different subdivisions around it. It's been a problem for a long time. And it doesn't seem like it's the most cumbersome solution. If there can be even some scaling toward a full solution, I would like to get that analysis back. It doesn't necessarily have to be contingent as a Section 59. I know Counselor Sullivan, you did that with the traffic issue. I think it was traffic. It might have been something else.
It was part of the P A C recommendation to do exactly what you're talking about. It was separate from the 59, just a recommendation that's...
Right, okay. So is that required, I guess is my question, where it's been discussed?
It is a C...
I think if it passes as part of the P A C recommendation, if we approve it, then it goes to...
Exactly.
Thanks. Do we have a timeline on when that, when council would get some input back on the, on the solution or solutions proposed for that intersection?
I can't give you a timeline this evening, but something will... We've already been communicating on it.
If we could get that timeline before third reading, that'd be perfect for me, and I'd be fully supportive. Just of when we can expect that to roll out.
Yeah, not, not the solution before third reading, but...
No, 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 no.
Identification in terms of timeline.
Yeah, we'll come back to council at this date with some proposals.
Sure.
Just something that we can look to in future.
Counselor Ogden, you have a quick question? Can you go right to it?
Yeah, Brent, I was down there this weekend visiting friends on Fisherman's Lane, and that was their big concern, that corner.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Opposed? Nobody. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Nope.
So Your Worship, we require approval of first reading by title and approval of second reading by title for this.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning by law of the city of St. John.
Approve second reading by title. Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning by law of the city of St. John.
Thank you. Who's, thank you.